Call to order this meeting of the planning board, which doesn't will include two hearings. And I will start by asking the members of the planning board to say that they are present. Ted Owens.
Here.
Paul Alpert.
Here.
Martin Jacobs.
Here.
And Adam Block.
Here.
Looking for your faces there on the screen. And I, Jean McKnight. And then I also want to recognize our staff, our planning staff who are here. Planning Director Lee Newman.
Here.
And our Assistant Planner Alex Cle.
Here.
All right. And then I'd like also to call the role of those who are representing those with applications and plans before the planning board. And I'll read those names. So one of the projects that's earlier on the agenda is the Heather Lane subdivision. William Pierceak owner.
Yes, I'm here.
David Kelly of Kelly Engineering Group.
Present.
And Robert Smart, Project Attorney, is he here yet? No, I'll announce his name when I see him arrive for the hearing. And then, of course, we have the proposed zoning bylaw amendment for the Carter Mill Building. And the participants for that are Attorney Roy Kramer. Attorney for the LCB Senior Living, and he is here. Another attorney also, Evans Huber.
Here.
And then these are representatives of LCB Senior Living. Lee Bloom.
Here.
Ted Doyle.
I'm here.
And again, David Kelly is also the engineer for this project.
Present.
Is here. Aaron Fredette, who is the Traffic Engineer.
Here.
Anthony Vivito, who is the Project Architect.
Here.
Mark Fager, who is with Fager Planning and Development and who prepared the Fiscal Impact Report.
I'm here, Madam Chairman.
And also Attorney Louise Giannakis of Gulston Stores.
Again, here.
All right. So I am going to say a few words about the conduct of these meetings and hearings. This open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th to the 2020 due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth related to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, Governor's Order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. And this allow order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. And we do, this agenda does include two public hearings that will feature public comment. There also is a third hearing that is to be continued. And we expect there will not be comments other than the board voting to continue the hearing to a further date. And for this meeting, the Needham Planning Board is convening by Zoom app as posted in the town's website, identifying how the public can join. And this also, to let you know that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, if you are a participant, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer unless that is something that's part of our agenda, of course, because anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. And all supporting materials that have been provided to members of this planning board are available on the town's website unless, otherwise, we know. And the public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda that includes the meeting materials. And so now, before we turn to the first item on the agenda, I just want to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. And after they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, that's me, the chair, down the line of members of the planning board, inviting each by name to provide any comment, question, or motions. So please hold your comments until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response to something some of the participants says, wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. Now, when we get to the public comment section, after, after members of the board have spoken, the chair will afford public comments as follows. We'll ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses. And then, once the chair has a list of all public commentators, and Alex Cle will be helping me to, to make sure I have that list, I'll call on each by name and afford three minutes for each for any comment. Finally, any vote that we take during this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So at this point, I want to ask for a motion to automate, if we encounter technical difficulties using the same Zoom ID, this meeting and the hearings included in this meeting will be continued to Tuesday, September 8th at 7:00 PM. So do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
All right. So I will do the roll call vote. Mr. Owens.
I don't think you have a second, Jean.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you for the reminder, Adam. Thank you. So, Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Am I? One, two, three, four.
Mr. Alpert.
Mr. Alpert, there he is, his face is appearing. So, Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye. So that is a unanimous vote for the automatic continuation if we should encounter such difficulties. So now I'll proceed to the first item on our agenda, which is a request to release surety. Under the Scenic Road Act, Reginald C. Foster, with regard to property located at 898 South Street Needham, has supposedly continued the work that the surety was being held for and asks to have the surety released. And I think in our packets, there were materials indicating that the work had been done. Lee, do you wish to, Lee Newman, our planning director, do you wish to speak to that?
Sure, yes. The work that was required under the planning board's special permit has been completed. The project has been inspected by the town's tree warden as well as the engineering department. And there's a memo, I think, in your package from both parties indicating that they've completed those inspections and that they are fine with the work that was done. The planning board is also in receipt of an as-built plan and drawing, which reflects those changes. I will say that during my tenure in Needham, the landscaping work that was done on this, on this particular property was way over the top. It looks absolutely gorgeous. I think the, the owner of the property did a project that went way beyond just to scenic roads improvements and has actually restored a historic garden. And I think it's a real asset for the town.
That's, that's very good to hear. And so I suppose I would ask for a motion to release the surety for 898 South Street.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so that is unanimous vote to release the surety. So next on our agenda is a request to extend an action deadline. And this pertains to the proposed definitive subdivision at 390 Grove Street. And, you know, the so perhaps, Lee, if you would explain the circumstances of this request.
Yes.
To extend the action deadline.
The planning board at its last meeting held a public hearing, which was a continuation on this subdivision. At that plan, we asked the applicants to address a number of issues to be reflected on a revised and definitive subdivision plan that was to be submitted. We have not yet received that additional information from the petitioner. So it was really not appropriate to continue the hearing tonight because we didn't have the additional information that was required. So this is really an effort to allow the hearing to move forward to the first planning board meeting in September. But because the action deadline on this subdivision expires at the end of this month, I had asked them to provide a written request to extend the action deadline out through the end of October to enable the hearing to happen in September and time to make a decision. I mean, there are some tolling mechanisms that are in place because of COVID-19. But just to be clear on when the action deadline is to end, I felt it was cleaner to get it reflected in a written request from the developer and a formal vote from the board to be recorded with the town clerk.
So the request that we're asked to approve is to extend the action deadline for the 9390 Grove Street definitive subdivision. The, the agenda says amendment, but I think of it as a subdivision is.
This is a subdivision decision. This was a subdivision that was, that was, that we held the hearing on at the last meeting.
Yes.
To tonight for the purpose of getting this additional information, which has not yet been provided.
Yes. So if I could have a motion to extend the action deadline on the 390 Grove Street definitive subdivision to the end of October.
So moved. Second.
And so, you know, it just occurs to me, for the record, we should, the person who moves in seconds should say their name. Would you please do that again?
Moving party was Paul Alpert.
And I seconded it to Marty Jacobs.
Thank you. All right, now I'll call the roll. Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so that extension to the end of October is approved unanimously. So now we move to our public hearings. And the first one is the proposed amendment.
Before we do that on 390 Grove, do we need a motion to, to continue the hearing to the September 9 meeting?
Yes.
So we do.
Yes, so I move that we continue the hearing on 390 Grove Street.
Second.
September 9, at what time, Lee?
At, at 7:30.
At 7:30.
As, as a matter of discussion, shouldn't this be taken up at 8 o'clock? Which is the time that this hearing was called for?
No, you're continuing the hearing. You can choose whatever date and time you want to continue it. Oh, I see what you're, you mean to vote for the continuation?
Tonight, right.
Yes. We could, we, we should probably continue it at that point.
I'll be back at 8.
Sure.
Excuse me. Are you saying that this was on the agenda for a particular time in our meeting? I don't see that on.
My agenda says 8 o'clock.
8 o'clock, Jean.
Okay, well, all right. So I don't know, I seem to be looking at some different agenda that I, that I had previously. All right, well, I'll work for that, from that as best I can. So this is 8:00 PM, and we will turn again to that agenda item at approximately 8:00 PM for the, for the continuation of the date and et cetera. All right, so now we are at exactly 7:30 PM, and that is the time for the hearing on amendment of the zoning bylaw to create the Avery Square overlay district and also a second article to amend the zoning bylaw to change the zoning map to show the Avery Square overlay district. And so I want to introduce this with, yes, these comments. Oh, first, first of all, let me introduce the persons who are here, who are here with regard, who know. At the beginning of the meeting, I did call the roll, didn't I?
Yes.
Yeah, so everybody who's here, it has been introduced. Sorry, I don't need to go through that again. I will.
Do you need a motion to waive the reading of the public?
Oh, yes, I do. I had a note, a task for that, thank you. I would like a motion to waive the reading of the, the advertisement of, the notice of the hearing, please.
So moved. Moved by Martin Jacobs.
Martin Jacobs moved.
Second.
And.
Second.
Alpert seconds. And I will call the roll. Mr. Owens.
Thank you.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so the reading of that notice is waived. So I will introduce the article with some comments. Articles one and two are proposed zoning by law amendments that are intended to facilitate the redevelopment of the currently vacant Carter Mill Building at the corner of Highland Avenue and West Street. The Carter Factory and Mill was established at that site beginning about 1865 and for the next 125 years until approximately 1990. The factory and mill operated at that location. The building has become a well-known landmark in Needham. In 1993, the building was approved for the Avery Crossing Assisted Living Facility and Avery Manor Nursing Home. In 1995, a small portion of the building was also approved for medical office use. In 2017, Avery Crossing and Avery Manor were closed as well as the medical offices, and the building has remained vacant since that time. The proposed bylaw amendments will allow the empty Carter Mill Building to be upgraded and renovated to create a 155 apartment senior housing community, including 72 age-restricted independent living apartments, 55 assisted living apartments, and 28 memory care units. Article one proposes to create the Avery Square Overlay District, Overlay District, and lays out the regulatory framework for the new Overlay District. While Article two describes its geographic boundaries. The boundaries of the Avery Square Overlay District match the boundaries of property on which the former Carter Mill Building sits, except at the southern end of the property. That is, the end of the property, you know, going toward Needham Center, where the overlay district boundary matches the boundary of the Avery Square Business District, which presently does not include that small portion of the property. So we're still, that, that small portion of the property will not be in, in the business district, and it will not be in the overlay district. And the overlay districts, I'll summarize the key provisions of the overlay district. First of all, what are, what are its limits, other than what I said about the particular site? It's bounded on the north by West Street. On the east by Highland Avenue. On the south by the, the existing zoning by, boundary line that I just mentioned, between the Avery Square Business District and the adjacent Single Residence B District, which run, it actually runs through the existing parking area that's south of the existing building. And then on the west, by the MBTA commuter railroad right of way. Now, the purpose of this overlay district are to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the community by creating opportunities for housing, but primarily serving individuals 55 years of age or older who wish to live in independent apartments and or may need to live in assisted living or Alzheimer's memory care, memory loss facilities. Within, and, and these units are within walking distance of goods and services, you know, the many shops in Needham Heights and public transportation and the civic life of the town. It will promote a vibrant, walkable area between, within the overlay district and will encourage and allow redevelopment of the existing property within the overlay district in a manner that will further those purposes. Toward these ends, development in the proposed Avery Square Overlay District would be permitted to exceed certain density and dimensional requirements that normally apply in the underlying Avery Square Business District, provided that such development complies with all the other requirements of the proposed warrant article. First of all, there are a couple of definition. Well, there is a definition addition to our section, the bylaw, which would amend the definition of independent living apartments in Section 1.3, so that within the Avery Square Overlay District, independent living apartments may be located in the same building that also houses assisted living and/or Alzheimer's such memory loss facilities. All three of those types of living can be within this same building. But they need not be part of another term that's defined in our bylaw that's called a continuing care retirement community. So this is a special definition for this, this development. The proposed Avery Square Overlay District Warrant Article lists the uses that are allowed by, as of right or by special permit. The use schedule largely mirrors that of the underlying Avery Square Business District with the following additional uses allowed by special permit. Special permit required for assisted living and/or Alzheimer's memory loss facilities, independent living apartments, and mixed-use buildings containing as primary uses these uses as the, excuse me. And it also allows mixed-use buildings containing as primary uses such uses as are allowed by special permit or by right in the underlying business district or in the, are in the overlay district, as well, of course, as accessory uses that is subordinate to and customer really incidental to these primary uses. So the proposed overlay district specifies that the planning board will be the special permit granting authority for all such special permits. So if Tom Eading approves this re-zoning, that will not be the end of the story. There will be an application to the planning board seeking a special permit for the particular development. Now allowable height and number of stories and so forth. The proposed maximum allowable building height, including mechanical structures such as HVAC equipment in this Avery Square Overlay District is to be 44 feet. This height limitation does not, however, apply to elevator shaft overruns. And they could be another five feet, so the total height doesn't exceed 49 feet of the elevator shaft. And the building may include, but not exceed, four stories, all of which may be occupied. And at present, this building includes three stories, all of which were occupied when the Avery Crossing Assisted Living Facility and Avery Manor Nursing Home were in operation. Now, there are going to be restrictions on the size of the fourth story. Under the proposed Overlay District Warrant Article, the total floor area of any fourth floor addition to the existing building may not exceed 35% of the total roof area of the existing building. So the fourth floor is going to be much smaller than the third floor, the second floor, the first floor. However, mechanical equipment, including, but not limited to HVAC equipment, whether or not that equipment is enclosed, is not included in the calculation of maximum allowable floor area. So this fourth floor, 35% of the total roof area is for essentially living space for units on that fourth floor. And also for the fourth story, minimum setback requirements measured from the side of the building, not from the lot line, are proposed as follows. From the eastern facade, that is facing Highland Avenue, the, the fourth story has to be set back 15 feet. And from the northern facade of the building, that is facing West Street, that, that fourth, fourth story has to be set back for 110 feet. And from the western facade, that is the facade that faces the railroad right of way, there is no required setback, so the fourth story could go right up to the edge of the building on, on the side that's facing the railroad right of way. Then from the southern facade, that is the facade we were talking about before, that's adjacent to the Single Residence B District, there would be a 35-foot setback. Okay, no, no force, it's a tiny amendment, addendum. No force. No fourth-story setback from the north-facing building facade, that is the facade facing West Street, would be required with respect to any portion of the building that is set back from West Street itself, at least 200 feet. So this will all be shown by the proponent in a slideshow that will have very good visuals to show you exactly what that is going to look like. And the whole idea of the setbacks is to is to reduce the visual impact of the fourth story from the surrounding properties and streets. Now, building bulk, that is what we call floor-area ratio, the ratio of the size of the lot, the size of the building, is one to one. Am I reading that rightly? It says 1.1. It's one to one. The property at the southern end of the parcel that's in the adjacent SRB District, that little leftover piece, that is, as long as it's contiguous with and in common ownership with the property in the Overlay District, will be included in the law for the special provisions in the proposed bylaw to include that in the law for purposes of calculating floor-area ratio. And in the proposed Overlay District, and this is something we've used in other districts with, you know, with apartment housing, the floor-area ratio calculation excludes garage parking that is within the building. So just a few more items to discuss. Off-street parking, and then the affordable housing requirement and other minor changes to the bylaw. So let's talk about off-street parking. The minimum number of off-street parking spaces specified already in Section 5.1.2 of the zoning bylaw will apply, except that for independent living apartments, there will be one parking space per apartment. And for assisted living units and Alzheimer's memory loss units, the requirement will be one parking space for every two beds, plus one parking space for every two employees on the largest shift. Now, we discussed a couple of times this little bit of a southern portion of the parking area that extends into the Single Residence B District. And parking, when it was used for the Avery Square, for the prior senior living that closed in 2017, it was used for parking. And so parking in this area will be continued and will be approved as of right, provided that the parking area does not extend any further into the SRB District than is presently the case. Now, there is an affordable housing requirement in this proposed Overlay District. 12.5% of the independent living apartments must be affordable units, with fractions rounded up to the whole number. However, there is no affordable housing requirement for the assisted living and Alzheimer's memory loss unit facilities. Now, as is required for all types of affordable units within mixed-use housing, mixed-income housing, I should say, affordable units will be dispersed within the building, not concentrated in any one area or floor, generally comparable in size, energy efficiency, quality, convenience, and unit-specific real estate-related amenities to the building's market rate units, so that they're comparable to the market rate units. And the selection of eligible homeowners or renters for the affordable units will be in accordance with a marketing plan that's approved by the Needham Planning Board prior to the issuance of any building permits for the building. And the affordable units will also be subject to an affordable housing restriction, as is defined, already defined in Section 1.3 of the town's bylaws. So just to conclude, in order to facilitate the proposed renovation of the building, the proposed warrant article would amend the definition of front setback elsewhere in the bylaw to allow for this building ground-level patios of less than 100 square feet each. This would be essentially along Highland Avenue. The units that are on the ground floor would enjoy patios. And no more than 100 square feet each, walls no higher than 36 inches around these patios, serving some of the ground-floor units that will face Highland Avenue. And there is a minor change to zoning bylaw Section 4.4.6, enclosed parking, to correct a wording error that was discovered in the drafting of this bylaw. So we're doing that. But it doesn't change the meaning and effect as we understood it already. So at this point, the proponents will present their videos, their slides, and who will be essentially conducting that presentation?
I'm going to need screen sharing permissions, Madam Chairwoman, Ted Doyle.
Yes, Alex, is that something you arrange?
Yep, let me do that.
Thanks, Alex.
So Ted Doyle of LCB Senior Living will make this presentation. And that others in the team will also have something to say, is that right, Mr. Doyle?
That's correct. I'm going to provide a little bit of color and I'm going to drive. But they're going to do the heavy.
Okay, so as each one defers then to the next person who's going to speak, please say the name of the next person who's going to speak as we go along.
Roy, are you going to kick it off?
Yes, so this now is Ted Doyle presenting for LCB Senior Living this presentation showing you graphically the existing building, the proposed building, and other aspects of the proposal.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'm going to turn it over to the team. Just on behalf of LCB Senior Living and Welltower, our partner, we want to thank you for your time tonight and for hearing our proposal, our petition. We're very much looking forward to this process. It's been a terrific process, very collaborative so far. And we're looking forward to working with the town and making this landmark building something really special going forward. So I'll turn that over to Roy at this point. We're also here to answer any questions about LCB or our operation as the board ceased to ask questions.
Roy, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I was going to make a brief presentation, but Gene has covered all the points of what I was going to say. So in the interest of time, I'm going to, you know, now that Ted has spoken, we're basically going to hear from each of the consultants, beginning with the project engineer, David Kelly, and then the project architect, then the traffic engineer, and then Mr. Fugere, who's done the fiscal impact statement. And the only thing I want to say about the warrant article is that the floor-area ratio maximum is 1.1.
Oh, thank you.
Not 1.1, but it's 1.1. But you said everything else that I was going to say. So Ted, if you have anything else to say? No? Okay, so then I'd ask David Kelly from Kelly Engineering Group, who is our project engineer, to go through the site.
David, what?
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. David Kelly with Kelly Engineering Group. Ted, if you could put on the first slide, it's the existing conditions plan. A few more down, please. Keep going, thank you. There you go. Back up one, back up two more if you can, Ted. Keep going, a little bit more. Perfect, thank you very. To the next sheet, please.
One down.
One down, Ted, please. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a delay.
Again, thank you. Yeah, no problem. So, Madam Chair, it's a pleasure to be a part of this team. This is the second time that you've heard this presentation, but possibly members of the public have not. So I'm going to take you through it fairly quickly, and we can certainly stop and answer any questions that you might have. This fairly basic-looking plan reflects the current conditions of the site today. Shown in green is the perimeter of the property, and the tan-colored is the outline of the footprint of the building. The site's 4.3 acres, you described it well in your presentation. It's found at the rear by the railroad. North is to the right on this plan. You've got Highland Street on the bottom of the sheet and West Street on the right-hand side. The property is located, as you pointed out, in Single Residence B and in the Avery Square Business District. It's a little hard to see that line on this plan, but it'll become a little clearer on the next plan. Just for your information, the Residence B component of the property is about 3/4 of an acre, 0.75 acres. The building footprint, for some statistics, is currently 63,700 square feet. There are 193 parking spaces, both located in the surface and in a parking garage at the first floor level, at the lower level. There are 193 parking spaces, excuse me, there are 28 parking spaces on Highland Avenue adjacent to the site, parallel spaces. And there are two driveways, one from West Street and one from Highland Street. I'm just going to take you quickly through the circulation. Really, though, some members thought differently when I presented last time. The address is West Street. The main access is from West Street adjacent to the railroad on the right-hand side of that plan that you can see. As you head into the site, you're parking on the left and right. Then there's a drop-off area to the assisted living that's there today. As you would continue through a little further, there is an entry to the garage. Proceed further into the site. There's a turnaround area with a gazebo. There's parking on left and right as you continue through. Then those of you who've been to the site will know that there's essentially an arch into the building just at the end of that roundabout area, and that actually continues straight through. And on the southerly side or the left side of this plan is the parking spaces that are primarily located on the Residence B District zoning district. There are 54 spaces on the south side of the building. And just for your information, the parking extends approximately 99 feet into that residential zone, just for your reference. There are existing landscape buffers on essentially all sides of the project. Ted, if you could go right past the next one to the third one. There you go, thank you very much. So this is the proposed site, and it represents a full reworking of the existing site to beautify the site, to add landscaping, to enhance circulation, to create outdoor amenity spaces. And if I could just quickly take you through some of the statistics. When we're completed with the project, there'll be 176 spaces. So we're actually reducing the number of spaces, essentially converting those spaces into landscaping, as well as, in the case of the garage underneath, into units. The southerly parking area will remain virtually unchanged other than enhancing and cleaning up some of the landscaping. So let's start at the same spot again, and I'll take you through this plan, this version of the plan, the new version of the plan. All of the existing landscaping and buffers will be enhanced from both West Street, Highland Avenue. The overgrown landscaping on Highland Avenue will be removed and brand-new, more suited landscaping of a lower scale will be installed along that edge. Heading in from West Street, the parking lot will remain essentially the same shape, except those landscaped areas and islands will be reworked and enhanced. On the left side, as you enter, there's an amenity area that's primarily intended for the memory care facility. And as you head in further into the site, you have that drop-off area that we talked about. That will remain where it is, but again, will be enhanced. Continuing further into the site, there's a large amenity area that will consist of amenities for outdoor living, such as outdoor dining, fire and water features, shade struckers, bocce courts, and an activity lawn. So that area will be really intended for assisted and independent living use. If you continue further in that area where there was a parking garage entry, will now become a service area for the new building and a dumpster area, a refuse area, which will be screened from both the onsite and offsite residents. Again, continuing further in, that whole area will be enhanced with, again, outdoor features. And then continuing to the roundabout area, there will be a new garage exit constructed in the L of the building. So vehicles will enter through the arches, as we described earlier, and then circulate into the building underneath, and then can exit at that point. The site has been designed to make sure that all emergency vehicles can access the site, can make the turnarounds within that roundabout area, and leave the site safely. All of the other circulation has been designed to allow the required truck vehicles to be able to enter the site and back into the service areas. Heading to the left side of the plan, that area will, as I noted earlier, remain essentially unchanged, except that the landscaping will be enhanced. Some of the things you don't see on this plan, and certainly more to come when we present this before the planning board at the special permit stage, should we get to that point, we have looked at and considered stormwater management and utilities, and we see no reason why this project, when designed, won't fully comply with your stormwater management standards, including your newest regulations that were brought in this year. Madam Chair, that's just an overview quickly. I'm certainly here to answer questions, and we can talk further about any point that you may want to. Thank you.
Right. Is that actually the end of your presentation? Or is there another member of your team who is going to add anything?
Yes, our project architect is going to speak next. Anthony, why don't you take the board through the architecturals and the renderings?
Good evening, Madam Chair.
And that's Anthony Viverito, project architect.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name's Anthony Viverito. I'm the architectural representative for the architectural team in Chelsea, Massachusetts. We put together the following architectural exhibits that highlight the design features of this new assisted living building. We're going to start tonight with a series of slides that show the existing building today and our proposed design. And these are perspective views. So I think as we go through the slides, you'll notice that what we've tried to do is preserve the architectural character of the existing mill building, maintaining the window openings and the other articulation, architectural articulation and ornament on the building. There are elements of the first floor that will have walkout patios for new residential units. And as we've talked about, as you talked about earlier this evening, there is a fourth floor that we're going to be designing space for independent living and amenity program for the assisted living folks. So Ted, here is our view from Highland Ave. The prior slide was the existing. Here is the proposed. And David Kelly talked about how we're going to replant this edge of Highland Ave and the parking lot here. So the plantings and the treatment of the building facade, you can start to see some of the porches that we're adding. So the plantings and the treatment of the building facade, you can start to see some of the porches that we're adding, walkout terraces for the first floor. Next slide, please. This is the existing at West Street, corner of West Street, looking back toward the building, the end of the, north end of the building. And the next slide. And the proposed. We actually have a memory care courtyard that will go at the north side of the building there. And you can see that in the foreground with the black fence. And you start to get a sense of some of the structures that are being added at the fourth level in this perspective as well. Next slide, please. Here we are at the, what is the West Street entrance to the building today. And our proposed. So there've been some, as David Kelly explained, there are some changes to the landscaping, which I think we've tried to highlight here for everyone to make this a more welcoming, welcoming community. The wood structure to the left is the memory care courtyard. It's a secured courtyard, so you see fencing material. And then as you look down into the site, you get a better sense of the scale of the building and some of the fourth floor that we're proposing. Next slide, please. We'll pause here just for a moment to look at the building today. And what we see on the roof of the building today is a hodgepodge of mechanical equipment, ducts, stair penthouses, elevator penthouses, other large pieces of equipment. And the next slide, please. And here are some view perspectives down, again, down some of the adjacent streets. Here is Mellon Street, the existing view today. And a slightly elevated view taken from the same view angle, looking at the fourth floor primarily here. Elevated view from the corner of Highland Ave. And the proposed to give you a sense of the scale of the fourth floor. And next slide, please. And that one we can skip. Yep. Here is an existing view from the parking lot at the south end of the building. And the proposed, and you start to see at the first floor, a couple of the patio doors and outdoor terraces. And what we plan to sort of activate that along the first floor of the building. The next slide, please. And these are perspective, computer generated perspectives, not photographs. And this is looking in this corner of the building, in the right hand portion of the screen, of the entry and exits through the parking garage that exists today. And then the main entry of the independent living occurs where we have the canopy to the left of the screen here. And then you can start to see some of the design elements of the fourth floor and how that ties into the overall building. The next slide, please. This is the formal entry to the memory care and assisted living portions of the building. Memory care is on the first floor of the building, and the assisted living is on the second and third floor with a fourth floor amenity building that you see on the roof here. Next slide. These are some more perspectives. This is taken from Hillside Avenue, an elevated street view. And the proposed. And the next. And we've got the more technical architectural elevations drawn here in orthogonal, in an orthogonal view, so a flattened view. And in the black and white are the, is the existing. Now, there's a lot of information on these drawings, it's probably difficult to read at this scale, but the black and white is the existing, and the colored version is the proposed. And we talked, we mentioned earlier that the top of the fourth floor is 44 feet. And we have a dimension string on the proposed east elevation. You can't see, but that's 44 feet to the top of that structure. And then the elements, the boxes that look like they're sitting on top of that are the elevator overruns, and those are at 49 feet. And next slide, please. The next slide, Ted. Okay, thank you. Here are our rendered floor plans, the rendered site plan. And I've presented this before to the planning board in some detail. As I mentioned, the right side of the plan, the colored blue boxes are the memory care. And we can see the entrance to the assisted living and memory care portion with the port cochere on the right hand side of the page. And if you were to sort of draw a dotted line in the middle of this plan, to the left side, if you will, is the independent living. And so there are larger blue boxes along the edge of Highland Ave and the parking lot. And you can start to see where the patios are for the residents, including the other areas, other amenity program that would be available to them. The next floor. And again, the L-shaped portion of the plan here is the independent living wing. And the right side, which is the long rectangular bar, is the assisted living. And the next floor, please. And the third floor, the same configuration. The independent living is in the L-shaped portion of the plan on the left, and the bar shape is the assisted living element. And here on the fourth floor, I've just mentioned again that we were very sent, designed conscious of not only the view perspectives, but to limit the total area of the existing roof, which we were designing the fourth floor. So that the volume here, the L-shaped volume and the smaller box to the right, take up about 35% of the total roof area. Another thing that we tried to do is consolidate all the mechanical equipment into four discrete locations, instead of having it scattered across the roof. And so you can see those mechanical areas in a, sort of in a black square, black and white square. One to the right of the independent living amenity building. And then another to the, in the center of those two. And then there are two more appended to the independent portion of the building. And then the setbacks, of course, vary across Highland Ave, West Street, and the street and the back of the building that faces the railroad. And we're very conscious, of course, of those view perspectives in laying this out. So I believe that's the last slide, Ted. Last slide. The last slide is, yeah, we can go to the last one here. The last slide is a view of, this is not a view that the, someone on Highland Ave is going to see. We've shown you what those look like. This is a view from, if you were standing on the roof in the southwest corner of the building, looking out across the roof. And what you see in the foreground is a mechanical screen. And then you also see these private terraces for the residents that are in between the actual living units themselves. And so we tried to integrate the architectural language and the issues of privacy and all that within a very condensed type footprint here. And that, that's it.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Our next presenter is Aaron Fredette, who's our traffic engineer.
Good evening, again, for the record, Aaron Fredette with McMahon Associates. So we completed a full traffic impact study for the proposed project, which included analysis of the adjacent signal of Highland Avenue and West Street, as well as the project site driveways. Overall, this type of land use, assisted living and independent living, tends to be a relatively low traffic generator. And therefore, the analysis that we completed indicated that there would be minimal impact based on the proposed project. Next slide, Ted. We also looked at the proposed project in comparison to the previous land use, which had assisted living, a skilled nursing facility, as well as some medical offices. And as you can see in the charts on the right side of the screen, the blue was the previous land use and the orange is the proposed land use. And not only during the weekday morning and weekday afternoon peak hours, but over the course of the entire day, the number of trips shown to be entering and exiting the site is significantly reduced from the previous land use. Next slide. We also looked at parking as part of our traffic impact study. The prior use had a total of 193 parking spaces on site. And the proposed use will, would have a number of parking spaces of 149. And although that's fewer parking spaces, that is generally because fewer parking spaces are going to be needed as part of the proposed land use. Next slide, Ted. What we have here in the top table is a summary of the proposed parking ratios for the proposed zoning bylaw. And essentially, that results in the 149 parking spaces to be proposed on site. We also looked at the demand of this type of land use. So looking at industry data from other similar types of sites, we estimated a peak period demand of approximately 80 parked cars, which leaves a surplus of 69 parking spaces during that peak period. In addition to having that surplus, the proposed project is in close proximity to transit, as well as other services, as was mentioned in the introduction. And due to that close proximity, we would anticipate even lesser demand for parking on site. And we would also anticipate that some of the vehicle trips could also be pedestrian trips because of that great access to nearby services and amenities. So with all that, the analysis showed that the proposed project is shown to have a very limited or minimal impact on vehicle operations within the study area. That said, if, should any other concerns regarding transportation or traffic come up, some of which have already been identified, those will be addressed as part of the special permit process with the planning board. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mark Fugier to discuss the fiscal impact.
Thank you, Aaron. Good evening, Madam Chair. For the record, Mark Fugier, Fugier Playing and Development. I wrote the fiscal impact report. We looked at four revenue streams that are going to be generated from this proposed project, first and foremost being real estate taxes. Working with the town's assessing officials, we looked at the area market and came up with an estimated value of the building, which is going to generate approximately $473,000 a year in property tax revenue. In addition, there'll be over $2 million of property inside the building once it's fully built, generating an additional $49,000 in taxes. Excise taxes for vehicles, we're anticipating to be $21,875 a year. And Community Preservation Act revenue estimate is approximately $9,400 a year. So at full build out, we're expecting $554,000 in revenue from this proposed project. On the cost side, we honed in on two departments that we felt had the most impact from this new use. And that would be the police and fire department. We have an extensive database of emergency calls that we reviewed with both the fire and police chief. There will also be a minor impact to the Board of Health. So we're estimating a total cost impact from those departments to be approximately $160,000 a year, $163,000 a year, resulting in a positive fiscal impact to the community annually of $390,862. The assessment of the property, we're expected to increase from the existing $9.4 million to $37.9 million, an increase of over $28 million, which isn't surprising, given the amount of money that LCB intends to commit to this endeavor. Property taxes are going to increase from $175,000 to $473,000. Also, secondary positive impacts will also occur, Madam Chairman. Construction lasting approximately 18 months will induce a significant economic boost into the local economy, with dozens of tradesmen involved in building the project and millions of dollars spent on construction, supplies, materials. In addition, $3 million in local goods and service will be spent annually. Eighty-seven full-time equivalent jobs will be created, including executives, culinary, residential care and maintenance. These activities will benefit the neighborhood businesses and drive new meals tax. Obviously, this building has been vacant for a long time. And when this building is full, it certainly reinvigorates the neighborhood. That's all I have, Madam Chairman, and I'll turn it back to Roy.
Thank you, Mark, appreciate it. Mark was the last of our presenters, so we're happy to answer any questions that the board or the public may have.
Well, thank you to everyone on the team for LCB Senior Living for that very complete and informative presentation. And before, seeing if there are any members of the public tuning in who would like to ask questions or make comments, I'll give each member of the planning board the opportunity to do so. And if we could, I don't know, are we going to go back to the regular screen? It's not necessary, but yeah, that would be helpful. So I'll call, I'll call the role of the planning board members to see if there are any comments or questions. Mr. Owens.
I have no comments or questions.
Mr. Jacobs.
Nor do I. We've heard this presentation before, and we've had plenty of chances to comment and question. So I'd really like to hear from the public.
Thank you, Mr. Block.
I did have one question, just a point of clarity. You just presented a number of slides with various perspectives, one of which was the view of the fourth floor, which showed on the L, the apartments for independent living. And then on the long bar, on the, on the long kind of rectangular section, it showed, it showed some kind of common space. Is that common space available to all residents of Carter Mill? Or is it restricted to certain access, to certain parts or certain groups of the facility?
All right. Would like to answer that question, Mr. Bloom.
Yes, Lee Bloom at LCB. The building that was identified on the assisted living, the one closer to West Street, that's intended for the assisted living residents. There, but within the, within the 10 penthouse rooftop units, there's a common terrace. You saw some of the terraces in between the apartments up there. There's a little larger terrace that's for the independent units. So both sides have some rooftop space, but it's very limited.
I would say that our populations do come and go from time to time, but that generally speaking would be the guy.
And just in case, just, there is no intention in the design, does not facilitate anybody walking onto that roof at all. If you wanted to go from a rooftop apartment over to the assisted living, you'd go back into the building and over and up. There's no design, it can't happen that way. People aren't allowed on that roof.
Perhaps Mr. Bloom, Mr. Block's question leads me to ask, perhaps you'd say something about the various amenities that are available to every level of living at this Carter Mill housing.
Ted, you want to take that, or you want me to?
Sure, sure. You know, we really encourage our residents, particularly assisted and memory care residents, since the independent tend to do it on their own. But we really are drawing people out of their apartments. We consider that a place for them to sleep and find privacy when they need it. But on a day, since we have a number of spaces that are intended to serve the entire population, things like a movie theater and presentation room, to libraries, to living rooms, to country kitchens, to spaces for recreation and arts and things like that, woodworking. And we have a swimming pool in this building. So all of these amenities are intended to make people, draw people out, give them social opportunities and interact with each other, and really combat the number one issue that we are combating for the people who live with us, which is isolation that they face when they're living at home alone. We're trying to create a vibrant community for them.
Mr. Block, does that answer your question sufficiently?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, yes, it does. I have no further comment.
And so, Mr. Alpert. And so, Mr. Alpert.
Yes, I have no questions or comments. I think the presentation was very thorough and I thank you all for a very nice presentation.
Okay, so before moving to the list of participants and seeing if there are any hands raised, let me mention that a letter came into the planning board, I think it was today, perhaps it was yesterday. Yes, it was dated August 10th, from Rob Gemetti, who is the president of the Village Club. And he writes in support, saying of this development and of the zoning amendments that would allow it to go forward. He met with the development team, was impressed with the project, believes it is probably the best use of the property with the least impact on the area. And as a butters on Morton Street, many of us in Needham with the Village Club on Morton Street, we welcome this project and hope that the planning board gives them the okay to move forward with it. And then, of course, I assume he hopes the town meeting will approve the zoning amendment. So now, Alex, will you assist me in seeing if there's anyone? Let's see, I'll go to participants. And, let's see, that's not helping me.
Madam Chair, if you click attendees, you'll see that there's a person by the name identified as, I'm mispronouncing, I think, but it looks like it's THE. That member of the public has their hand up and raised.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Block. A member of the public, I believe this is the only person then. I'm having difficulty finding that list. There I go. Now I'm on participants again. And if I scroll down, let me just see. So in case somebody else tunes in.
You want to click on attendees, Jean.
All right, well, I'll have to seek the guidance of someone to find that. I'm not finding. Oh, attendees, I'm very sorry. I did find it. Here we are. And the person that you mentioned, Mr. Block, is who again?
Is they're identified with their hand up as THE.
Oh, yes.
I don't know if Alex or if Clay are able to enable them to speak.
Yep, I will allow them to talk now.
Thanks very much.
So the person who's only identified as THE, please say your name and address.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Glenn Malmo. We actually were trying to type "the" Malmos from my wife and I, but somehow hit return before we got finished typing. So that's why it's just "the." So apologies there. I just had one quick question.
What is your address?
I'm sorry, 40 Morton Street.
Yes, okay, thank you.
And I heard that you said the Village Club had approved, from their perspective, the plans and everything. Then that's good. But I was curious, there was a lot of talk earlier about the parking on the street, right, adjacent to it. But that parking is also a key part of the Village Club plans for parking. So I was just trying to figure out how that might impact the Village Club in terms of their off-street parking, because they're not supposed to park on Morton Street. So they have a limited number of parking availability and that is part of their plan as well. So I'm curious if they really thought that through and figured out how the impact of the parking to them is as well.
Would somebody from the team like to answer that question?
Lee, why don't you?
Sure. As you could see by the presentation, our demand is 149 spaces. Well, our per code will be 149 spaces, should this be approved. Our demand is a little less than that. We understand from back in the 90s when this thing was originally permitted, I believe it was 26 or 28 spaces on Highlandwood designated for this building. Since that time, I do believe a lot of the neighborhood association and local folks have been able to get passes to be able to use that. And, you know, as we move forward, our preliminary discussions are that if we don't need those spaces, we have no issue to challenge any of that and we'll work with the neighborhood and the Village Club to facilitate that.
All right, that was Lee Bloom of LCB Senior Living speaking. And is it true, I live in the neighborhood down off Highland, I mean Hillside Avenue, and those spaces, and I often go up there and park and then go into Trader Joe's, those are metered spaces. Are they not on both sides of the street there?
I believe they are.
Yes.
And I apologize, I don't know the logistics of the use of those spaces. But yeah, I have seen, in fact, the meters were covered recently and I'm not sure why, but.
Townwide, the select board made a decision, townwide at this time, to eliminate, pay to park. Okay, so I'm sorry, Glenn, I didn't catch your last name. So I'll just ask you, Glenn, is that a satisfactory answer to your question?
It is. If I could just ask a slight follow-up. Will the parking remain metered or is that going to change?
Actually, I do believe half of them are not metered now and half are metered. And that's something we'd have to talk to the town about. That's a town decision.
And you know, this, nothing is going to happen on this site until there is a special permit application before the planning board with a hearing. And that will be noticed in the newspaper and immediate butters and butters within a certain distance will also get written notice. So, you know, kind of keep an eye on your local paper too to see if you see that notice.
And excuse me, but we'll also, if you'd like to meet with us personally, we would more than willing and would love to do that at your convenience, Glenn.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right then, there is, Glenn was the only one whose hand was raised. There are other names on the list without names, hands raised. So I'm going to suppose that they are listening in but don't have a question or comment. So at this point, Lee, is there any reason why there should not be a motion to close the hearing?
No, I can see no reason why that would not happen.
Jean, can I just, this is Marty Jacobs. I think there was a further or additional letter submitted to the board, which came that I saw late this afternoon from Michael Nyden. You may want to read that or at least reference it in the record.
Lee, do you have that? I haven't seen that. I didn't see that come through.
Okay, I'm going to ask Alex to pull that letter up. I don't have it in my agenda package and I think that came through when I was at the housing trust meeting.
Yep, that came through really late. Can you hear me? I was kicked off. That's why Clay helped. Okay, good, I'm back. It is a letter from, a letter received today from Michael Nyden. Dear Planning Board, as a lifelong Needham resident and active community member working on projects such as the Needham Town Hall and Great Hall, he mentioned some other projects he's done. I support the revitalization of the building at 110 West Street. Explains a little bit about the project. He's particularly excited about the 72 independent units and 83 assisted units. This project will add to living options for the elderly and give an economic boost. He supports it. So I will put this in the packet if anyone wants to read the full letter.
Thank you, Alex. All right then, I think with that, unless there are further questions by members of the board, and if there are, speak up. If not, and appears nobody is asking, I'll ask for a motion to close the hearing.
And we'll be closing here.
Mr. Alpert will close the hearing. And Mr. Jacobs seconded, is that right?
Didn't, but I will.
All right. And Mr. Block, did you have some discussion? Is there a discussion?
Yes, thank you. Just very briefly, Madam Chair, the presenters for the residents of Carter Mill recently presented at a meeting of the Council of Economic Advisers and the CEA had taken a vote for, in support of this proposal. And we're communicating that vote to the select board. But I just wanted you as, you know, as Chair to be aware that that had happened. And also that the applicants have also reached out to the Needham Heights Neighborhood Association to make a presentation in September as well. That's supposed to be September 14th for additional community support. And I raise these issues because I'm a member of both of those external organizations.
As am I on Needham Heights Neighborhood Association. Thank you very much. That's very helpful, Block. All right, so we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
And Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
And the chair has aye, so it's a unanimous vote to close the hearing on these proposed zoning articles. And I ask our planning director on our report, our decision, will be, I assume we will be taking that up at a later meeting?
Yes, we will take up the, our recommendation on this article and any changes we want to make in the article at a subsequent meeting. Our next meeting is currently scheduled for September the 8th. Given the schedule on the warrant, it may be necessary to have a short interim meeting though to take this up, to give us sufficient time to finish the final language of the article for the warrant. But we can look for an alternative date that becomes necessary after this meeting.
But any such interim meeting will be posted on the town's website and those who are signed up to get notice of planning board meetings will get that notice. So it just, just as tonight's meeting and hearing was supposed to. All right then, that agenda item is taken care of. Thank you very much to the presenters.
Thanks. You're free to talk. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Very welcome. And so we move on to the Heather Lane subdivision and the Heather Lane, I'm looking for, yes, the Heather Lane definitive subdivision and also the Heather Lane extension definitive subdivision and residential compound. And this is a continued hearing from June 16th, 2020 and July 21st, 2020, planning board meetings for both of those connected subdivisions. So the persons who will be presenting, I mentioned their names earlier, but I'll repeat their names. William Pierceack, who is the owner. Is Mr. Pierceack here?
Madam Chair.
Oh, there he is, yes, Mr. Pierceack, right.
Chair, if I may interrupt?
Yes.
We do have on our agenda, that you said you didn't have any agenda that you're working on at 8 o'clock for 390 Grove Street, and we do have to take the vote to continue that.
Oh, well, thank you very much for that reminder. It's very helpful. And we're now at 8:40. So let's go back to that. And that was the request to extend action deadline on the 90 Grove Street definitive subdivision amendment. And the request has actually two parts. One is to extend the action deadline to the end of October and the other is to continue the hearing to September 9th.
Actually, September 8th.
Oh, I misspoke, September 8th at, and we have a time.
7:30.
At 7:30.
Jean, I think we already did vote to extend the action deadline. I think what's left is we have to vote to continue the matter to the 8th.
Correct.
Right.
Just, all right, if everybody's clear that, yeah, I think we did get that vote and then somebody said, oh, wait a minute, we have it on for 8 p.m.
I'll be happy to repeat the motion to continue this matter.
Maybe it would be good to have it all done it once again. All right, thank you.
Ethan, what time, Lee?
7:30 on September the 8th.
Right, that's my motion.
Second. I got there, Adam.
Okay, so Mr. Jacobs moved and Mr. Owens seconded to continue the hearing on 90 Grove Street definitive subdivision to September 8th at 7:30 p.m. And so I'll call for the vote. Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
And Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
All right, and the chair has aye, so that hearing is continued. So now, now we'll move to the Heather Lane definitive subdivision, the Heather Lane extension definitive subdivision and residential compound. And William Pierceack, the owner of the largest amount of the property involved in this subdivision is here. And David Kelly of Kelly Engineering Group and Robert Smart, the project attorney. So I know that the hearing is still open. And are there changes to the plan or that need to be discussed during the continued hearing?
I believe so. Do you want me to go ahead?
Yes, please.
Okay, so at the end of the last hearing on July 21st, there were four open items. The first had to do with an issue raised, or one of them was an issue that was raised by Paul Alpert, having to do with a lot width issue. So we have submitted revised plans for Heather Lane subdivision dated July 22nd to add a 10-foot wide landscape strip abutting Chestnut Street. Now, this was carved out of lot one of the subdivision. This will give the homeowners association control over the landscaping for that strip next to the entrance. And it also solves the lot width problem that was raised by Mr. Alpert as proposed lot one no longer has frontage on Chestnut Street. Lot one is still going to meet all the zoning requirements. So that was one change. Our second change is the plans for Heather Lane extension. Lee Newman had asked that we add a note regarding the barn at a proposed residential compound lot three, saying that the barn will be converted to a single-family residence. So we added that note. The third item was, had to do with conservation, the conservation restriction. We worked, we've worked quite a bit with the commission on this. Just by way of sort of background, just a brief history on this. The Conservation Commission initially asked for a restriction like that, like what was granted by the Petroni Corporation for the Riverbend subdivision next door on residential compound lots three, four and five. And that Riverbend restriction line actually tracked the bordering vegetative wetlands line. So we initially drafted a plan that created a conservation restriction in lots three, four and five along that bordering vegetative wetlands line. along that bordering vegetative wetlands line on, on Mr. Pierceack's property. The Commission then asked to extend the restriction line to the 200-foot riverfront jurisdictional line, which would have the effect of restricting a significant amount of upland on residential compound lots 3, 4, and 5. We responded by proposing a compromise, saying that we would agree to add this upland, but that the restriction would continue to be only on residential compound lots 3, 4, and 5. Because there had been some discussion about extending the restriction to Heather Lane lots 5 and 6. They agreed to the compromise. So at this point, we've provided more than what the Conservation Commission had originally asked for. Their letter, the Commission's letter dated July 28th, which I believe you have, accepts the compromise, 200-foot line on just residential compound lots 3, 4, and 5. So we would like to have the, the draft Heather Lane decision revised to delete, to replace the language calling for a conservation restriction on lots 5 and 6 with language calling for a conservation restriction just on Lot 4. Because Lot 4, as you may recall, is that large 13.26 acre lot that is now, is going to be divided into the residential compound lots and 3, 4, and 5 of the residential compound lots that are but the river.
Yes, and I, I will confirm that the correspondence that is in our packets does include two letters from the Conservation, Director of Conservation, the first letter, July 28, 2020. And then the second letter being addressed to, to me as chairperson from Debbie Anderson, the Director of Conservation. As, as Mr. Smart represented, it does say that, acknowledge that in addition, the Conservation Commission also requested that the applicant consider extending the area of the conservation restriction over the 200-foot riverfront area located on lots 5 and 6 as identified in the definitive plan of the subdivision of land. And those two lots would be in the, as you've come off Chestnut Street, the several lots in the Heather Lane subdivision before you get to the Heather Lane extension. And those would be also riverfront lots 5 and 6. But they, she says the final agreement appears to be a compromise between Mr. Pierceack and the Commission. And goes on to say the Commission will accept the extension of the conservation restriction boundary to include the 200-foot riverfront area on Lot 4. Lot 4 is the big lot at the end of Heather, of the proposed Heather Lane subdivision that is to be further divided into several lots as part of the residential compound. So, and will no longer pursue the extension of the conservation restriction under lots 5 and 6 as described above. So it's true that that compromise has apparently been accepted. She, let's see, I just want to see. Oh, yes. And she says, she's writing on behalf of the Needham Conservation Commission.
Right.
Okay, so I just wanted to refer to the pieces of correspondence.
Thank you. I just, just to continue, the fourth open item was, was a letter, a comment letter from the Department of Public Works. And my understanding is that on August 4th, a letter from Tom Ryder, the Engineering Department came in. And basically, he asked that we comply with the NPDES, Public Outreach and Education requirements. My, my client has actually signed letters to that, saying that we've, we've agreed to that for, for both Heather Lane and for Heather Lane extension. And we're happy to provide those letters to the board whenever they want them. I, I actually have the signed letters here. So those were the, those were the four items outstanding from last time. I'd just like to say one thing, well, a couple of things. But the first is that we've heard that the owners of 770 Chestnut Street, that's Messrs. Brumer and Brown, have submitted an A&R plan to the board. And I believe the A&R plan calls for a couple, two lots off the Heather Lane subdivision road. I mean, we've been working cooperatively with them and we, we're basically supportive of that. But, you know, obviously I understand that that's their, that's their ball to carry in, in front of your, in front of the board.
Let me interrupt just for clarification. Mr. Smart, Ms. Newman, is it, is it, has, have we received an A&R plan yet?
I'm not aware of a filing of an A&R plan. I haven't seen it yet. I don't know if they, if they set up an appointment with the town clerk and file something there and they haven't notified us yet. But I'm not aware of a filing for an A&R plan pending on that property.
So it's anticipated. Is that right, Mr. Smart?
We, we heard, I heard from my client who worked for Mr. Brown. And Mr. Brown said that they had, that they had filed. And maybe he was intending to file. I don't know what actually happened.
I'll follow up with the town clerk in the, in the morning to find out if something came into her office that I'm not aware of.
But I, I haven't seen anything. I haven't seen the plan at this point.
But thank you for alerting us to the fact that we shortly will be, be seeing a plan that will be, will, once, once, assuming the subdivision is approved, they will be using that frontage to create, or to divide a piece of land into two lots. That's now one lot. Is that correct, Mr. Smart?
Currently, it's one lot.
Yes, and it will be divided into two lots. So.
I, I guess so, either two or three. I'm not, I'm not sure what their plan is. So I think they also have some frontage on Chestnut Street.
Okay.
And Chair, if, I don't know how you, how you want to proceed, but I'd be happy to go on and talk a little bit about the, the draft decisions that Lee Newman prepared and circulated. I think it might move things along more quickly.
Yes, I, I agree. And I, I know that you proposed some changes to the draft.
Hearing perhaps first?
Yes, I was, that was the next thought. Thank you. If, as far as the changes that Mr. Smart mentioned, if there are any questions or comments by the board members with regard to those changes that we would want to, you know, keep the hearing going to, to talk about, please, please. Yes, Mr. Block.
Madam Chair, I just want to call your attention that I see on the, under the participants' screen, under the attendees, that there is a member of the public known as SB who has raised their hand. I'm not sure if it was to speak to the hearing or any of these items, but I just wanted to bring your attention. And now I think they've disappeared.
Oh.
Another.
No, they're, they're there. Oh, thank you very much, Adam. I appreciate being alerted to the person who may wish to speak before we close the hearing. So first of all, let me ask any board members, if any board member wishes to speak before we close the hearing or to ask a question. And then I will turn, assuming as SB still does want to speak, because now their hand isn't raised. But we'll see. Okay. Any, any board members?
Well, I just have the question about the lighting plan for the Heather Lane extension decision. And Lee, am I hearing you correctly, that, that we should close the hearing first and, and discuss that when we're discussing the decision? Or is this something that we should be discussing before we close the hearing?
Well, if you want to discuss with them, whether, you know, what their plan is for lighting, because you want more information on it before we get to the hearing where we're conditioning it, then this would be the appropriate time.
Good. Then I would like to raise that issue. The draft of decision for the Heather Lane extension subdivision does have something about submitting a lighting plan. And Mr. Smart reacted to that to say that the plan does not show lighting and that, that I'm, I'm confused about that situation. And so I think we ought to get clarity. Are there, are there not going to be any lights on, on the, on the turnaround, which is, which is in the extension?
If I may respond?
Sure.
Turnaround, the turnaround, the cul-de-sac, well, the cul, I'm not sure by the turnaround, if you, you mean the cul-de-sac?
I mean the cul-de-sac, yeah.
The cul, the cul, the cul-de-sac is part of the, is part of the Heather Lane subdivision. We're not, that's not what we're referring to. David Kelly can probably speak to the lighting with regard to that. What we're saying, what we're saying and what we're asking is that the, the Heather Lane extension decision be changed to eliminate any requirement for a street lighting plan for Heather Lane extension. We don't think that's in keeping with the residential compound concept, you know, which is to create up to five single-family dwellings sharing access via a private street or driveway rather than a formal subdivision road. So what we're proposing is that it be up to each homeowner to decide what kind of lighting that homeowner wants to provide for, for his or her lot. But I believe there is lighting at the, at the cul-de-sac. Again, I, I think perhaps David Kelly could speak better than I could to that.
Mr. Kelly.
Bob, that.
This is Bill.
Bill, you, yeah.
Yeah, I've got the plans in front of me. And, and on the, at the end of Heather Lane, the cul-de-sac in the grass strip, as you approach the cul-de-sac and along the cul-de-sac, there were three streetlights that will illuminate the cul-de-sac at the end of Heather Lane. And there are also four other streetlight fixtures as you come up Heather Lane from Chestnut Street towards the end of the cul-de-sac. So there's a total of seven light fixtures or streetlights.
Okay. And then, and I don't have the plan in front of me. So then the extension is an extension from the cul-de-sac into the compound. And there's not going to be any lighting at all along that extension road?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there was none proposed, as Bob had mentioned, in keeping with kind of the residential compound concept of the 20-foot wide driveway and the five individual lots and more of a driveway than a roadway. We were going to leave it up to the individual lot owners to install post lights or lights on the homes and things of that nature and not go with the streetlights.
So I'm going to turn it over to the Planning Director and ask whether there's any, there's any issue with our subdivision regulations or.
Well, customarily, we, we require lighting. And customarily, I mean, for these kinds of situations, we have gone to this, not, not a traditional streetlight, but a decorative light. And we customarily, you know, required the decorative lights for the individual lots with the individual property owner providing the, the electricity to those lamp posts. So it's not a traditional streetlight. It's more of a decorative light. And it's generally provided along these kinds of extensions. So it will be a change in practice. And that's, that was the only reason why I called it out, I think, in the, in the draft decision, because they hadn't provided any of that decorative lighting for the extension component of the subdivision.
And Lee, when you refer to other cases, you're, you're talking about similar under the residential complex.
I, I had to go back and actually look at what we did specifically in the residential compound context. But generally on private ways, even when they're waved down to these narrower whiffs, we are requiring these decorative lights. They're not a traditional streetlight. It's a decorative light that is along the edge of the, of the, of the right of way. And it was a concept that was really introduced in the, in the, in the RRC district as a way of kind of understanding the more rural nature of that section of Needham.
So perhaps the board would, would like to discuss in the hearing so that we can make that a condition of the decision if we so wish.
Policy, I think, issue for the board to decide how they want to apply it in the circumstance.
Yes.
Before I speak, Adam had his hand raised.
I was just, thanks, Paul. I was just wondering, and I think Lee just addressed this, of the distinction between the requirement for the residential compound for illumination versus the seven lamp posts that will be installed on Heather Lane proper. It sounds like it's, if I'm summarizing correctly, it's a requirement on what would be Heather Lane. And on the extension, it's been a practice to have not a full or ordinary streetlight, but to have a decorative lamp that does provide for some illumination along the right of way at the edge of the lot on, towards the extension. Is that, is that correct? Which is not currently proposed by the applicants, but typically a practice.
The decorative light concept is a concept that's been utilized in the residential compound, excuse me, in the, in the rural residential zoning district. And it's been utilized along a traditional subdivision street as well as circumstances where the right of way width has been waived. So the decorative light has been, would traditionally be used along a regular subdivision street in this particular zoning district as well as in a residential compound context.
We require that the decorative lights actually be illuminated at night?
We've required generally that the lights be put out there, that they, that they're decorative in terms of their, their, their look. We don't, I think it's assumed that they're going to be illuminated. We require that the homeowners who, on whose lots these are located, assume responsibility for the maintenance of these lots, of these lights. And that the, the, either the maintenance and the paying of the bills for the lights is either covered through, through a homeowners association trust or by the individual owners. And it's varied as a function of how the subdivisions have been proposed.
Yes, Mr. Block.
Do we have any guidance on this item from, from the town engineer and/or from public safety, either fire or the police departments?
No, I don't have any letters from them that, that specifically, you know, address this. I mean, street lighting has historically been required. And the decorative light was just kind of a way of still getting some illumination done without having the intrusion of, you know, your traditional streetlight.
And this, and what would roughly the setback be from the light at the right of way to the actual houses? Do we have any, is it 200 feet or something? In other words, enough, enough light to provide some illumination in the event of an emergency or some action at night, but not enough to disturb the actual residents that, of those lots that may be 200 feet back from those lights. It's not going to cast into their house, for instance.
Okay. Can Mr. Kelly respond to that question?
I can respond to that. It's Bill Pierceack.
Oh, yes.
So the, most of the, so the lights proposed for Heather Lane are more of the decorative nature than your traditional streetlight, consistent with what Lee has been, what Lee has, what's been done in the past, as Lee had mentioned. And most of the streetlights are either adjacent to or opposite driveway openings where proposed houses may or may not go. It's hard to predict where they're going to go and how far back they're going to go. But they all fall within the 40-foot right of way. So, you know, one house that's 60 feet off the street is going to look different than a house that's 200 feet off the street. So they were really set up to light up where the driveway intersected with the.
Right. And that's, but that's for the Heather Lane itself, not for the extension, correct?
That's correct. And I'm flipping through the zoning book now to look under the residential compound to see if there is any.
It wouldn't be in there. It would be in the subdivision regulations, I think, the lighting requirements.
Isn't the extension?
Isn't the extension, forgive me for putting it that way, isn't the extension analogous to a driveway? And there's no requirement that I have lighting on my driveway. I mean, I think that the individual homeowner is probably going to make decisions about lighting in front of their homes. But that, to me, is separate from us requiring a certain kind of decorative lighting. Am I missing something?
Well, it's really a question from policy, what you want to, what you want to require in this particular instance. This layout for this street is considered essentially a subdivision way. We're laying it out as a way. It's not a driveway. It's going to look and function probably visually like a driveway. It's going to be 20 feet wide, or was it 18 feet wide?
20.
And it's, so it's being laid out under the subdivision control law as a way. So it's not a driveway. It has the legal status of a way. I think it's really a question of what is the look you want to accomplish there? And if you feel it's appropriate for the individual owners to provide the lighting as it's been proposed, that's fine. I just wanted to call out that our regulations for the layout of ways requires lighting be installed.
So to just follow on, just so, the residential compound is part of the zoning bylaw that has certain exemptions from what would otherwise be the applicable lot frontage, et cetera. And is, and but in approving the street that provides access to the residential compound lots, we're operating under the subdivision rules and regulations and which do, does require lighting or presumably a waiver. Am I expressing that correctly, Lee?
Yes.
All right. So we could decide to expressly waive this. But it seems as though, I don't know if we've got the decision written up properly to do that, if that is our decision.
We would have to add that provision, but certainly that can be easily done.
All right. So do we want to continue the discussion here and now of whether we want to allow the certain lots in the residential compound? Please remind me, are there four, ultimately four lots in the residential compound?
Five.
Five, five lots. So that once you're off Heather Lane cul-de-sac and you enter the 20-foot wide way that provides access to these five lots, there would be absolutely no requirement for lighting. It would be up to the individual property owners to provide lighting and to provide the electricity for it. Is that correct, Mr. Smart?
That's what we're asking, yes.
Yes.
All right. So, so if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
So the clause that's in the proposed decision is our item number 14. And it starts out by saying, "Street lighting shall be provided in the subdivision in accordance with the plan." That's the first sentence. And Mr. Smart's comment is that the plan doesn't show any lighting.
And you're, Mr. Alfred, you're reading from the decision for the extension.
Right, I am, I am. From the Heather Lane extension, proposed definitive subdivision decision. Clause 14, the first sentence is, "Street lighting shall be provided in the subdivision in accordance with the plan." And Mr. Smart's comment is, "Well, the plan doesn't show any lighting."
That's because the decision also anticipates a plan modification and requires that they actually modify the plan to provide the lighting.
Ah ha. Okay. So, okay. So that, yes, so thank you, Lee. That closes the loop.
Right, and that is being resisted by Piersak and Attorney Smart as being unnecessary. So I think that's where we are with this.
Okay. So I think at this point, I'm going to suggest that we close the hearing and we take this up and we actually discuss the decision.
Or was there anybody from the public that we?
Yes, I certainly, Mr., the person who's identified as an attendee by the initials S.B. has had his or her hand up, and now it's up, yes. S.B., will you please state your name and address and then ask your question or make your comment?
Do they have permission to speak? Or does Alex or Clay need to?
No, they should have permission. They need to unmute themselves.
Yeah, S.B., perhaps you are muted? If you wish to speak, this is your opportunity. Your hand is no longer raised. So perhaps.
Raising.
And now it is raised. S.B., we're really trying to give you the opportunity to ask you a question and make your comment. Clay Hutchinson or Alex? Do you know of any reason why this attendee is unable to ask their question? Now, now that person?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, oh, yes, now we can. All right. And please say your name and address clearly.
I'm Jimmy Bruner, and I am a manager for the 770 Chestnut Street LLC. And my address is 130 Prospect Street, Cambridge, Massachusetts. So thank you, Attorney Smart, for noting that we do have a lot which we will be subdividing. It's actually a single lot that faces on the Heather Lane. And we will be expecting to subdivide that into two lots. And we came and Mr. Brown arrived at 1:30 this afternoon to file the A and R. And unfortunately, Ms. Newman was not available. And he made an appointment to come back at 4:30 tomorrow to leave the required documents. Ms. Newman, you did know about it, I think, because you sent him an email at 3:05 this afternoon suggesting he not file. So I'm a little bit confused as how come you did not know about that.
I, I just got an email that told me that somebody was trying to file a plan. It was not identified as being at this location. I wasn't familiar with it. And I suggested to them that the normal protocol for subdivision or submittal is that we get a copy of the plan ahead of time. We have a chance to look at it. If there are any problems with it, we can work with the surveyor to resolve them. And that we then move forward with the filing. I think I also said in the email that we have established an electronic process, and I asked the person to be sensitive to that. And I also called out the fact that the planning board doesn't meet again until September the 8th, and that it would be helpful if the filing was coordinated with their schedule. So we weren't doing special meetings because we were under a statutory time limit for 21 days. The first time I heard filing was this afternoon, and it was not identified as being at this, at this particular location. I can call it the email I received.
All I can tell you is that we are not looking for a subdivision. We are, each lot is two and a half acres, and it's got adequate frontage. And quite frankly, we know we're correct. And you've actually seen the lot before. But we will file it, I guess, tomorrow electronically, however you prefer.
All right, so Mr. Bowder, if I have that correct?
Bruner, B-R-U-N-E-R.
B-R-U-D-E-R. You're saying you do not intend to submit a preliminary plan for review before the clock starts ticking on a submittal for approval, subdivision approval not required to a tumpler or action by this board?
I believe we're not required. We said we wanted to bring to the board's attention that we do support the road as proposed so long as you're aware that there may be two more units than the 11 on it.
Okay. So the essence of your comment today with regard to the business of this hearing is that you do support the subdivision, the Heather Lane subdivision and the Heather Lane Extension subdivision as proposed.
I think the issue the planning board will have as A and R comes through, and I guess I misread it. It does identify 770 Chestnut Street. I don't know why I didn't connect the dots on that. But this was the first time I did hear about the A and R filing. I think the issue the board is going to have is that when he files his A and R plan is whether or not the way in front of him, under his plan, is adequate. Certainly, it's going to be adequate when the subdivision street is constructed or when it is bonded and improved. So I think the question is, because the subdivision does not currently exist, whether or not there's a private way in its present form. The board will deem that as suitable access for the purpose of the A and R.
Yes, that's a very important issue. Glad you mentioned it. That might very well be the case with a plan submitted at this time for endorsement. But we'll deal with that when the plan is filed. And we have to make a decision about the plan. All right. But Mr. Bruner is in favor of this subdivision as the subject of this hearing? Any further comments or questions by the planning board before we close the hearing? And we will be moving on to the decision tonight. Is that right, Lee?
Yes, that's the intent.
Right. Or are we all, we all said to close the hearing? If so, I ask for?
I move we close the hearing.
Mr. Alfred?
Let me, let me, let me clarify. I move we close all three hearings. The subdivision application for Heather Lane, the subdivision hearing for Heather Lane Extension, and the special permit application for Heather Lane Extension.
Thank you very much for that clarification and motion. So Mr. Alfred moves to close all three of the hearings as he decided them. And do I have a second?
Second, Madam Chair, Adam Block.
Marty, you're speaking and you're muted.
Sorry about that. To the punch anyway.
All right. And is there any discussion? Okay, then I call for a vote. Mr. Owens?
Hi.
Mr. Block?
Hi.
Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Alfred?
Hi.
And the chair is eyes, so the hearing is closed. And we will move on to our decision. We received, this was a decision drafted by our planning director. Comments on that decision were made by Attorney Smart. Some revisions were made by our planning director. And after the packets were, went out late last week, we did receive, I think it was yesterday afternoon, both Mr. Smart's red line and Lee Newman's red line indicating those changes. And also her memo to us explaining the issues that were raised by the changes proposed by, by the applicant, by Mr. Smart. So perhaps, I don't know, should we let you take the lead in going through those issues? I have made a list of them and, but there are certain issues on the Heather Lane decision. There were eight issues. Some of them were, oh, yes, I agree, let's make that change. And others were, the planning board really should, really needs to discuss this.
Well, I think that, I don't know how Bob wants to do this, but I mean, I think the first issue where, I think he had asked for a change and that had not actually been reflected in my revised draft was, I think, under paragraph two, which speaks to the issue of the conservation restriction easement. The draft, as it's currently in place, it requires the conservation restriction easement be on Lot 5 and Lot 6 in the Heather Lane subdivision. This was a piece, I think, the Conservation Commission compromised on and decided not to pursue. I left it in because I felt that it was a decision the board should make knowingly. And also, it also raises the question about, which Mr. Alfred had raised to me earlier, which is whether or not it makes sense in this decision to capture Lot 4 in the residential compound under the conservation restriction easement so that the restriction is put in place even if, for some reason, Heather Lane Extension does not go forward even after secured its approvals. So I think there are two decisions to be made. I think, as I understand it at this point, as it relates to this condition, the first is whether or not the board wants to include the conservation restriction easement on Lots 5 and 6. And secondly, whether or not the board feels it would be prudent to extend, to address the issue of the conservation restriction easement on Lot 4 in the residential compound in two places. In this decision and in the decision on the extension to guarantee that you get the restriction even if they don't go forward with the residential compound.
So maybe we'll start with the first issue. And that is, we originally proposed that there should be a conservation restriction on Lots 5 and 6, which are not part of the residential compound, as well as on Lot 4, which would affect, I think, three of the lots in the residential compound, I believe. And Mr. Smart nods, yes. So I have my own views too that I'd like to express. But let's, let's go to the board members first. Mr. Alfred?
Yes. So as a former member of our Conservation Commission and being conservation-minded, I would, I would love to see the extension to Lots 5 and 6. But as a member of the planning board, originally, my concern was the concept of allowing public access to this conservation restrictions. We had the site visit. I was convinced that public access did not make sense. And so my attitude now is that whatever the conservation restriction is, whatever the language is, is really a matter for the Conservation Commission, not for the planning board. And whatever the Conservation Commission negotiates with the applicant is up to them. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't propose to second-guess what the Conservation Commission decides to do. And so I would just suggest that we do reference Lot 4 because Lot 4 of the Heather Lane subdivision is a large lot, and there is going to be a conservation restriction on that. And in my mind, it should be there whether or not they actually go through with the residential compound.
Okay, so that answers the second question as well. It should, the Heather Lane, Heather Lane.
I'm just, I'm just one of five.
As Mr. Alfred's saying. But he would go along with the Conservation Commission in not demanding as part of our decision that there be a conservation restriction on Lots 5 and 6 of the Heather Lane subdivision. Any other board member wish to have anything to say about this?
I would just say that I agree with Paul.
And I would add that I agree with Paul.
All right, Mr. Block?
I agree with my colleagues.
Yes. And I must say, I agree, having been on the sidewalk, also being disappointed that, given the lay of the land essentially and the way the wetlands come in on various sides of the property. It did seem that pedestrian access was not really feasible. That was disappointing. I had to back off myself to wish to have that. So as we know, when we have wetlands, the Conservation Commission has jurisdiction anyway. So perhaps part, I don't know, Mr. Alfred, having been a member of the Conservation Commission. So perhaps part, I don't know, Mr. Albert, having been a member of the Conservation Commission, if you agree that in the areas we're talking about along the river of lots five and six, there would be jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission anyways, anyway, under the wetlands protection exact threat?
Absolutely.
So, so I think we're all in agreement of not...
I don't, I don't, I, I don't think those regulations would be as extensive as the requirements of the conservation restriction that is being drafted and agreed to by contract here. But there are, there certainly are restrictions by statute and by the state and the town's regulations on the, on, on the 200-foot riverfront.
As, as somebody pointed out, there is upland area included in that 200 feet that might not be, you know, protected as completely as the conservation restriction would protect that upland area. But it does sound as though, and I agree with Mr. Albert, that we're no longer going to want to demand as a condition on the Heather Lane subdivision, a conservation restriction on lots five and six. But in that decision, we want to expressly require a conservation restriction on lot four so that even if the residential subdivision, the residential does not go forward with the lots, the different numbers, we've got that covered. Is that, that's what we want, right?
Right.
Okay. So as far as the decision goes, when we approve the decision, it's understood that that change can be made to the decision.
Yes, to lot four. And I think the next diversion point that I prepared and what the applicant had asked for was I basically called out that the conservation restriction needed to be in place and that we needed to copy the restriction under condition 14. And that related to lots five and six. So I think that section would just be redrafted so that those provisions would only apply now to lot four. And so the next, I think the next issue was under, would be under my paragraph 16. I had asked for a landscaping plan for the cul-de-sac at the end of the, at the landscape island in the center of the cul-de-sac. They had indicated that they had provided some detail and they had. They had showed that within that cul, within that landscape island, I think they were proposing to plant three trees. Customarily, we get a more comprehensive landscape plan, which shows, you know, if it's going to be grassed, if there are going to be additional plantings put out there. So I had asked for a landscape plan with a little bit more detail. I think they felt that the showing the three tree locations was sufficient.
If I may respond? Lee, we're, we're, we're fine with that provision. And just to make, just to make it easier, we're also fine with, you know, dry wells for all of the lots, all the houses, not just the new ones. And just one more thing, Lee, just so I think it'll make it, things move more quickly.
Thank you.
You, you have, you have three, you have three paragraphs in both subdivision decisions. One has to do with a DEP sewer extension permit, another a special sewer connection permit fee, and future sewer tie-ins to properties located outside this subdivision. As long as the words "if applicable" are added to those sections, we're fine with those. So that may speed things up a bit.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. We'll certainly speed it up.
Okay, so I, I have got these issues by numbers of Lee's email. And so does that, by adding as "if applicable", does that take, that takes care of item number three off-street drainage surety? Oh, no, no, that's, that's definitely required, right?
Five, six, and seven on the Heather Lane. Five, six, and seven on the extension.
Right, so if, if, if applicable, and leave it as is otherwise. So then that does leave the, looks like the only issue left there. No, there are two issues, one, but one is going back to number three, off-street drainage surety?
Lee, Lee made that change.
We made that change, that's right. That we made the change, okay.
I think, I think what you said on number two, the cul-de-sac landscaping plan, that he's okay?
Yes, yes, that's, yes, we're fine with that.
Okay.
And so then, where are we then on the amended version of the definitive utility plan? And we said, you said you were waiting for clarification.
Why don't we just add "if applicable", Bob? Resolve that.
Bill, are you okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Okay, so then we've done that issue, and many of the same issues were on the Heather Lane extension. So the slope, the reference to nine percent slope was eliminated, that paragraph, so we're also... One. And Lee has agreed to the change, that we don't need a plan and profile of Heather Lane extension. That's number two, I call it A. And then two B is the plan revision to show the 200-foot conservation restriction. And we do want that. We, we do want to show on the subdivision plan for Heather Lane extension, the, the 200-foot conservation restriction, right?
Yes, I would think so, so they're consistent.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're fine with, we're fine with that. Originally, I had thought that this was sort of a built-in suspender situation since we already have, you know, a conservation restriction with the plan and all of those being referred to in the decision. But we don't have a, we don't have a problem also providing that on the, on the, in the actual subdivision plans. It's, it's, it's not, it's, there's no heavy lifting on this end to get that done.
Good. So that, does that bring, bring us back to the street lighting issue again on the extension? And what, what the board wants to see? Are we content with the idea that this is, this residential compound is a special kind of subdivision that, that doesn't need, that really could never have any lighting up near the street, up near the way? Or do we want to require lighting and then show it as some kind of decorative lighting, one for each driveway or one for, you know, wherever along the, along the road, we want to see the plan? So I think that's the issue for us. Any, any comment on the board, by the board members on which way you want to go with this?
Marty, I guess my only comment on this is that I would, if, if it's a change in what we've done in prior residential compound situations, I would want to understand why we would do this as a change from our normal policy. That's my only issue. I, I had no part in whatever the policy has been in the past. But I, I generally like to keep the policies unless there's some good reason to, to make an exception.
And that would require, would that require some research into the compounds out there in Needham so far?
There are very few PRDs in residential compounds. I, I, I would want to, I really want to look at what we did in those individual cases before I told you definitively, you know, what was, what was applied there.
So, with, with...
Bob, do you think that there's some way that we can have some wording so that we can have a decision tonight and still kind of leave the issue open so that we can see what's been done in prior compounds and, and discuss this later when we're discussing the revisions to the plan?
I, my, I, I guess my, my hope is, is that you'll actually vote the affirmative relief tonight. That, you know, the relief that's called for in the decisions. And actually execute the signature pages with the understanding that Lee is going to revise the, all of the, all of the decisions. Because there are a number of changes that, that, that I think we all agree need to, need to be made, that we've all basically worked through here tonight. And that, you know, that the, you know, the, the decisions don't go to the town clerk until, until Lee's language, language has been circulated to the whole board. And the whole board has said it's okay. So I, I think you could, I think you could take that step now. But we're, I mean, what we're hoping obviously is to, to, not to have, you know, the, the signing, let's say, take place in September. Because that goes to the town clerk, there's an appeal period. And, and, you know, we don't get started as early as we'd like to. And we do have, we will eventually have a winter, I think. So, you know, we'd like to move this as quickly as we possibly can.
Could it be that the decision requires a condition with regard to lighting to be shown on the plan? And of course, that can be done post-decision. And the plan would say right on it that, that no, no particular lighting arrangement is required. Is that, is that a feasible way to proceed, Lee?
No, I, I'm not quite sure what you're doing there, Jean. I mean, I think...
I'm trying to, the decision, it says that the lighting plan, almost as you have it, will be shown on the plan.
Okay.
If it's, if the decision is that we don't require any lighting, well, that would simply be indicated on the plan.
Number 14, Lee, in your draft subdivision decision on Heather Lane extension, would number 14 cover that?
Well, 14 is basically saying that you need, that you need to provide the street lighting.
According with the plan and, and as Jeanie said, if the plan didn't show any lighting, if that's what we agreed to after the signing, then it would satisfy 14. It just wouldn't have any streetlights on the plan.
Where is your requirement, Lee, that the plan be revised to show street lighting?
It's on page seven, under item 2B.
2B?
I asked for the detail and the location.
Maybe, maybe others, I, I was just expressing my opinion. Maybe others are the opinion that we don't need to require any of the lighting as requested.
No, I'm with you, Marty. I'd like to know what we did in the, in the past.
Okay.
Well, isn't it, I mean, don't we, in our decisions, ask for a plan that addresses the issue to the satisfaction of the planning board? And that way, we put this particular decision of what that plan say about lighting off until the plan is submitted to us.
Well, maybe we could say the plan should be revised to show the streetlight detail and location to the satisfaction of the planning board. And then you've got the other condition in there. And then you're basically making a decision about what's going to satisfy you when the plan comes in.
That's exactly what I was going to suggest.
Yes.
Bob, do you have a problem? Does that...
Well, I guess, I guess I'm, I'm still not clear as to whether this is going to be required or not.
We haven't decided yet, but we're trying to have language that says that we're going to make the decision in the future. And if it winds up that the plan that's submitted doesn't show any lighting and we're okay with that, then you've met the condition of the decision. Right? Because the plan should be revised to show the streetlight detail and location as Lee's language, I thought, worked by...
Well, to the satisfaction of the planning board, consistent with...
To the satisfaction of the planning board.
Consistent with his practice.
Okay, and, and I guess what, what we're assuming is that between now and then, Lee, you're going to be looking at some other decisions and talking with board members and telling us what those decisions, what the board has done in the past.
Yeah, we'll look at the PRDs and the residential compounds, and there are a couple of them, and see what actually happened.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that. And if Lee and the town has done and approved things in the past, we can certainly follow those as guidelines and come up with a plan to satisfy the board.
Okay.
I do, I do, if I may, want to go back to a comment that, that Ted had raised earlier, which was that in the event that the extension is designed to effectively serve as more of a driveway and less as a real public road, if it does, you know, notwithstanding its legal classification, but the purpose for which it serves. If, you know, I, I would be curious how the concept of that way in those decisions, Lee, that you're going to look back at and what the plans showed at the time? Because I think that's an interesting distinction between Heather Lane and the, and the extension.
Well, I'm going to be looking for private ways that maybe were servicing, you know, by, I, I'll be looking at PRDs that are comparable size and comparable look and feel to what was proposed here. There aren't a lot of examples out there.
And I'm particularly interested, as Marty says, in, in saying, what have we done in other residential compounds? I mean, it's, it's okay to look at other similar types of setting, but if there's another residential compound, it would be interesting to see what we did for that.
Bill, do you remember what you did at Fur Drive?
I do not.
No, Bill Pierceak, I think, developed, you've developed Fur Drive, do you remember? I don't remember.
I honestly, that was 15, 16 years ago. I honestly don't remember. I can take it right through tomorrow and let you know.
And I'm, I'm cognizant of Ted's comment, which, which Adam is supporting. Marty was saying that we're going to look to see what we've done in the past. And if we're going to go in a different route, we want to know that we're going in a different route, make the decision to go in a, in a different route. Just because we required the lighting in the past doesn't mean that we're not going to change our minds now. That's right. And say, this is basically a driveway, so let's not require lighting.
Yeah, and I totally support that. Let's get the facts and make a conscious decision.
As which way we want to go.
Whatever it's going to be.
Yeah.
All right.
I think that's what we're trying to accomplish here.
So is that enough guidance, Lee, for the drafting of the decision? Have you dealt with every issue at this point?
I, I believe that we have. I need for you to vote the, I think I need for you to vote the individual decisions with the changes that we've made. And then I can prepare the, a further, a further change, a further update of them.
Okay, so do we want to handle it by separate motions, one for each?
Yes.
One for each decision?
Yeah, yes.
May I just go back and make sure we dealt with one issue? I think, I think we have. And that is the very last issue on the extension. You said the link to approval for the Heather Lane and the extension and vice versa. Are we clear that we... Oh, you, excuse me, Lee, you agreed that that was okay? That the change made to the decision was okay?
Are you, I, I, what, what changed?
About number eight, it had to do with link to approval for Heather Lane in the extension. Linking the extension to the approval for Heather Lane.
Yes.
And the decision as drafted now takes care of that, is that correct?
That takes care of that, and that's also embedded in, in the special permit. Basically indicates this subdivision is, it basically indicates that the Heather Lane extension subdivision is... is conditioned upon Heather Lane being approved and recorded. The question is, do you want to carry that farther and say that, that the conditions of Heather Lane have been met? This is drafted to say that in order for Heather, Heather Lane Extension is conditioned upon Heather Lane being approved, the plan being endorsed, and all the apparatus associated with that going on record. Do you want to also add that the conditions embedded in Heather Lane are also covered?
I, I think that creates a timing problem for Mr. Pierceack because he can't get started on his residential compound work until the work is completed on Heather Lane. And I would think that he'd want to try to do it simultaneously.
I wasn't trying to make it so that he, well, he's going to have to have that street updated and he's going to have to have that street bonded before he's going to be able to get lot releases for his residential compound.
Right.
Well, it's not that it's actually been constructed already to set, to, to meet every requirement of the decision. It's that it's been, it's all approved and bonded.
Yeah. And so the conditions embedded in it are met. So that subdivision, it goes forward, he improves the street. And then the lots in his subdivision can now be released.
Is that ordinary practice?
We, we don't normally have, we not, we normally have a subdivision that's coming in off of an existing public way. In this case, the access to Heather Lane Extension is conditioned upon an improvement of an access to get you there. So the normal, so the protocol would be to have that subdivision all recorded and to have it improved to the point where there is suitable access to the lots in the back. And the lots in the back themselves would need to have the access constructed before they could be released. In Needham, the protocol, the process, the procedure is you develop the street down to a subgrade of, of a binder course. It's physically on the ground before the lots are, are released for building and conveyance. So in this case, Heather Lane would have to be brought to that point. And Heather Lane Extension would have to be brought to that point before the lots in Heather Lane Extension could be released for building and conveyance.
Does it seem to Plinywood members that what was expressed here is what we should have? Otherwise, you could have a situation of, of the developer seeking lot release for the extension when the road that takes you to the extension is still full of puddles.
Is that, is that a legitimate problem though? I mean, is that, is that a likely scenario at all?
It's a possible problem, yes. I mean, it's something that we should, that you, I think your responsibility is to make sure that there's suitable, safe and reasonable access to the lots. And the people that are buying these lots are protected. So we're not in a situation where, I am sure Bill's not going to do this, but we're not in a situation where the roadway wasn't constructed and people are living in houses that with inadequate access and the town doesn't have the monies to pay to upgrade it. So.
Practically speaking, this, and I don't know, forgive me if I'm naive here. And, and Mr. Pierceack, I certainly don't intend here to put words in your, in your mouth. And please correct me if I'm wrong. And yet I would think that you, there is, there's no way you would commence construction on, on the, on the buildings for the residential compound without, you know, without first having all of the required elements, including not just the plans, but the immediate, the immediate ability to implement the construction of the way to get to the, to get to the construction sites. You're going to need a basic way to move your excavators, bulldozers, dump trucks and everything in order to get to the lots themselves. And then after that work is, that rough work is done, then you'll properly grade the, you know, and complete the, the, the way into the extension, correct?
Well, a scenario could exist where two of the lots in the extensions sell to potential buyers. And though, and if the road, the road was bonded, I could stop the construction on the Heather Lane Extension houses. If the road was bonded, then the lots could be released. So there is a scenario where that could possibly happen.
Where there is a gap.
Yes. And I guess a question for you, Lee. If all the conditions on Heather Lane need to be met before lots can be released on, on Heather Lane Extension, it's not the construction of the Heather Lane Extension, it's the lot releases, correct?
I'm sorry, I don't quite understand the question. You could reframe it.
So you wanted to tie the conditions of Heather Lane being completely, all the work being completed before lots are released on Heather Lane Extension?
No, I, I want to tie it to the, 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 the implementation of the, 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 the conditions of Heather Lane. So that, just like in Heather Lane, we will not release any lots in that subdivision until that road is down to a binder course. I want that same condition to apply to Heather Lane Extension. So Heather Lane is, is down to a binder course, which is when the town would normally release the lots on Heather Lane because they, they're satisfied that there's reasonable and safe access to those lots in that subdivision. I want that done before Heather Lane Extension comes in for slot releases. And Heather Lane Extension would have to have its road down to a binder course itself before those lots would be released.
I think, Mr. Pierceack, if I could rephrase your question. I think Mr. Pierceack was asking, would this condition of, of relating to lot releases prevent him from doing the act of construction of the road of Heather Lane Extension until Heather Lane is, is done to the binder course and so forth?
Right, Mr. Pierceack.
Yeah, I mean, that was one of the questions. I mean, the, the plan is to start at Chestnut Street and come all the way through and complete the road to the end of Heather Lane Extension to do it all at once, not in phases.
Well, I, I don't know what would preclude you from doing that. You just won't get any lot releases for building or conveyance until the whole structure is, is, is in place.
So as long as you're tying it to the lot releases of the lots in the residential compound, that makes sense to me. He can do a building, he can, you know, whatever. And then we, we're just not releasing lots, but he's able to do the work.
So I, I guess that it, there needs to be a specific definition of what you consider to be safe access or binder down. And I'll give you, for instance, do I need to install the dry well and drainage on the existing homes in order to get my lot releases for Heather Lane Extension on the homes on Heather Lane? So what's, what's the cutoff? Is it just binder down and everything outside of that doesn't matter or?
What's binder down?
On the road.
The first code.
It's a basic code of asphalt on the preliminary road.
Yes, the first code, yes.
Thank you.
Well, in answering that question, I wonder what does the decision, the way it is now worded, the way you think it should be worded, Lee, what does it say? I, I wasn't able to print the final versions out that came.
The condition now says, the approval granted herein is subject to endorsement of approval by the board on the Heather Lane definitive subdivision plan, following compliance with all applicable conditions as of approval as set forth in the planning board's definitive subdivision decision for Heather Lane. And it references, this is prior to the release of any lots for building or sale. Copies of recorded Heather Lane definitive subdivision plan and associated instruments shall be provided to the planning director. So the question is, should there also be a condition that says that the, the endorsement of the Heather Lane Extension subdivision decision is, is subject to compliance with the, with the conditions of approval as set forth in the subdivision decision that the planning board issues for Heather Lane? So the first, we have a condition that says they've got to record the plan and put everything on record. So there also be a condition that says that Heather Lane Extension is, 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 is dependent upon compliance with the conditions of the Heather Lane subdivision decision.
Yeah, but Mr. Pierceack has a very valid point. Releasing the lots in the residential compound shouldn't be conditioned upon the dry wells being in place on the existing houses on Heather Lane subdivision. And that's one of the applicable provisions. And that's just one of them. We also get to the sewer lines and some of the other issues that relate to those, to those front lots that really, it seems to me, are not affecting the, the residential compound.
But the roadway condition should be satisfied.
The roadway conditions need to be satisfied. If, if you can specifically limit it to the roadway conditions.
And should we use the word sufficient to provide adequate access? Is it's always the issue in a, in any subdivision?
Access, is that for public safety, you mean? And engineering?
As mentioned by Mr. Block, the, you know, construction DFOs, whoever might be legitimately going down that road for the purpose of access to the Heather Lane Extension.
As long as we're not really suddenly having to define what the, what access means. You know, becomes a test of what is reasonable, then it just, it becomes an ongoing mess. An, an ongoing mess of time and words and providing no real solution for, you know, for development.
Well, I only use the word adequate access because it's a term of art in, in the subdivision.
Right.
Why, I could write the condition so that it's dealing with access.
There's law about it, et cetera.
Is there, is there a difference in the ability to release a lot for the purposes of construction separate from releasing the lot for the purpose of conveyance? The time, the time difference, time one being, you know, first phase construction, time two being marketable title, that can be certainly months. And if we could release the lots for the residential compound for the purposes of construction, if they meet certain minimum standards of completion of the road for the Heather Lane subdivision, and then do a final release of the lots for the purposes of marketability, that, that seems to me to allow the, Mr. Pierceack to, you know, to serve the purpose of construction. And, you know, without, you know, without a delay, without additional delay.
The town has not historically done that. We've had, we've always tried to link building and conveyance in the bonding and the binder course being done. There have been historical problems when we segregated it, where people have conveyed properties, if you can believe it, without, without the, the final release being done. There's a subdivision off of South Street that's got, had, had two lots in it where that had actually occurred. So the practice has always been to not try to do that. I mean, we've done it in some very unusual circumstances, but historically, we've tried to keep the building and the conveyance piece done. And we grant that relief when the binder course is done and the utilities are in.
So if I may summarize you, you're promisingly, we're not asking for anything unusual here. The only unusual aspect of this is to link the two subdivisions together.
That's correct. And it's ensuring that the access to the subdivision in the back is, 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 is going to be, is adequate.
Yes.
Because it's not coming off of an existing public way.
Right. And we really have to have a condition like that. Otherwise, just focuses on the extension.
Yeah.
Lane is not going to provide adequate access to the extension. Lessening the extension.
Sounds like Lee's agreeing to draft something for our consideration for the final, that.
Oh, will we?
I think, I think we're all in agreement for what we're looking for.
Okay.
How will we handle that in a decision we wish to make tonight? Do we, Kevin, do you have enough guidance, Lee?
I think I have enough guidance. You're, you're looking at making sure that the access is adequate. So I'm conditioning it on the adequacy of the access being in place for the Heather Lane subdivision prior to any releases happening on Heather Lane Extension.
Lee, can I ask a question? If the entire road was bonded, could the lots be released prior to any road construction?
The town wouldn't do it because they'd want the binder down. The town has never, like, said to somebody, you, you, you know, you, the, they, they, they define access being adequate for purposes of lot releases is at least having the utilities in and the binder. That's the foundational piece.
Okay.
And then you, you bring your bond in after that's done.
Thank you. Lee, when you say the town, you mean the building department?
I mean, the planning board historically, the Department of Public Works, the Engineering Department. That's how it's always been done. So we don't say, you know, here's your subdivision plan. If somebody brings you a bond in for the total cost of the street and you say we, we're going to release the lots, we don't do it that way. We say that utilities have to be in there, the drainage has to be in, the binder has to be in, then come in for your release and bond what remains. And then the developer builds the house lots. And then, and when, when the houses are constructed, generally completes, you know, the finish coat of hot top, maybe the curbing.
And that's what we did at Burr Road.
Yeah, that's, that's the protocol.
What's, what's the timeline for that?
Depends on how fast the developer moves and how quickly he sells the lots.
Well, my timeline is to start immediately. And, you know, this is probably a 10 to 12 week road project.
Right.
For a bond amount.
But that, but that release, that releases, you know, on application is fairly instantaneous. It doesn't pose additional delays in the process.
Well, it has to get, there's an engineering estimate. And correct me if I'm wrong, Lee. The engineering department comes out and does an estimate on the work to be completed and that's submitted to the board and it's approved. And then the bond amount's approved and then the bond is posted.
Okay.
So if on that point, and I'm glad I mentioned it because it seems as though we haven't got to it and so it may have led to a lot of discussion. With that point resolved in a manner that we wish she can write up the, the decision as we discussed, are we ready to approve the decision with the changes discussed at tonight's meeting? Is that good enough or do we?
That's going to be my proposed motion.
Usually our motion, yeah. All right. So I asked for a motion and it sounds like Paul Alfred.
Well, let's do them one at a time, I believe, is what Lee was suggesting. So let's start with the Heather Lane subdivision. I move that we accept the definitive subdivision, subdivision decision for the Heather, for the Heather Lane subdivision as drafted and with the revisions discussed this evening.
Second.
Mr. Alfred has moved that we approve the Heather, Heather Lane subdivision decision with the changes discussed at tonight's meeting. I got that, right? All right. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Marty? Seconds. Any further discussion? All right, we'll go down the roll call. Mr. Owens?
Hi.
Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Alfred?
Hi.
And the chair is high. So that Heather Lane subdivision decision is, we have made that decision. All right. Now we move on to the Heather Lane Extension, which has two parts, the approval of the subdivision and the approval of the special permit.
So I, so I move that we accept the definitive subdivision decision for the, for the Heather Lane Extension as drafted with the revisions discussed this evening.
I second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion? So roll call, Mr. Owens? Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Alpert.
Hi.
And the chair is aye, so that's unanimous decision. And now we have the Heather Lane extension special permit because this is under the residential compound by law.
Okay. I did not see any comments on the special permit. Bob, have you reviewed the special permit and had no changes?
Yeah, that basically, that, that basically looked, looked okay. Let me just take a look here, hold on a second.
There's only the one small revision.
Yeah, there's, yeah, it's a really, a really, a really small point, Exhibit 23, a description of the, of the plan. What I'm, what I'm actually planning to do is to send Lee a letter tomorrow just identifying the sections that I think, based on this discussion, that I believe need to be made. Just, you know, so she has it. So I'll get, I can get that out tomorrow morning. But on this one, it was just, it's just a revision date on, on one of the plan sheets. It needs to be added.
And that's in paragraph 23?
Yes.
A revision date for one, okay. So, and do we know what the revision date should be?
Yes, yes. If, if you look at where it says, it's referring to sheet number one. It says it's dated March 3, 2020. There should be an insert revised July 7, 2020, and and then it will go on revised July 22, 2020.
Yeah, I didn't put that in because it's actually not on the plan. I know you put it, I know you brought it in twice, but the drawing itself doesn't have it on it. That's where I can insert it, but.
Okay. Anyway.
Anyway.
Is it appropriate to insert it with the expectation the plan will be submitted with those date changes?
I'd say yes.
I mean, do we need any further wording in, in our motion?
No, fine, we'll fix it.
All right.
Not another point now.
Bob, I just want to point out, and I, and I pointed this out to Lee, but it seems to be, I believe it's a statutory thing, so, so it's not changing, but the, the subdivision are all state that they, they expire after four years, if you don't get started in four years, and the special permit is only two years.
I, I took a look at that, and the statute, the special permit statute, I believe, calls for two years.
Yeah.
I think that's the reason for the difference.
Yeah, so.
But I think, I think we're stuck with that.
But I think you're getting started next week anyway, so.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. So, I finally found where we have the language here. So I, I, I move that we approve the special permit for the Heather Lane Extension Residential Compound subject to the conditions set forth in the decision. And in the, yeah, in the decision as drafted and with the, I'm going to call them with the technical correction suggested by Mr. Smart this evening.
I will second that motion.
Great, so Mr. Jacobs seconded. All right, so any further discussion? Bearing none, Mr. Owens. Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes, hi.
Mr. Alpert.
Hi.
And the chair is aye, so that special permit is approved unanimously. So I think that completes our work tonight on Heather Lane and the Heather Lane extension. And if Mr. Smart spoke about getting the decision signed, I won't be, well, it doesn't need to be signed by all five of us, I suppose, but I won't be back, I need him until Wednesday.
So let's, I mean, let's just plan on getting it done over the next week and a half.
So Lee, you will, or Alex will let us know when it's on Marty's porch.
That's correct. Alex is on vacation next week, so I think I'll be dropping it off on Marty's porch, so.
I'll drop it off if you need help.
It's okay.
Marty lives right across the street from me, so I'm gonna, well, actually, I'm going to be on the Cape, so I'm not going to be very helpful.
Well, that's where I am, you know.
Okay.
I'm at my sister's summer house, so that I can, would be something.
That's great.
All right, so thank you very much, Mr. Pierceack.
I'd like to thank all the board members for all their help and cooperation. It's been a long process, but it was nice working with everybody.
Thank you.
Very, very creative plan.
Thank you.
Yes. And Mr. Smart, Mr. Kelly, always a pleasure, and we'll move on to the next item in our agenda.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
So that completes, and I didn't see any other hands raised in the front part of attendees, so that completes our work for the hearings. And so we want to talk about the extension of time for our wave, I guess you'd call waivers of enforcement, temporary outdoor seating, outdoor display policy. And in our outdoor display policies, we had it extending till Labor Day or September?
September 7.
September 7, which is fast approaching, and we probably will have some good enough weather for our outdoor dining even beyond that. So I believe the select board would like to see this extension, is that right, Lee?
I haven't spoken with them. I just called, I just noticed that we had not done, and I thought it was prudent to take it up.
Lee, what do you suggest we extend it to, what date?
Do you want to go as far out as Thanksgiving?
That's what I was thinking.
Whatever the particular date is of Thanksgiving, or else it's usually, I think, any month, we could say November 30.
Yes, my reaction is we might, might as well extend it to December, to November, whatever Thanksgiving is, because the weather is probably going to cut things short of that anyway. So that would be my motion. I'll extend it to Thanksgiving Day.
Second.
Adam got it first.
So Jacob, Mr. Jacobs made the motion, Mr. Block seconded it, and any further discussion? No, all right, Ms. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
And Mr. Alpert.
Hi.
And Mr. Alpert, the reason you're always last is you're always on the bottom of the screen, so.
Oh, okay, I was wondering.
All right, I kind of go, you know, about, all right, so we're all set with that one. And so now we had, I think, two Board of Appeals applications for our review. Does anybody have a comment on either of them that we wish to convey to the Board of Appeals, or is it no comment?
I had no comment on either one.
Anybody else? All right, then, I had no comment either.
I have no comment.
All right, so do we need a motion for having, making no comment on these two?
Second.
Jacobs and Mr. Owens, I think this time made the second.
No, it's Paul Alpert, he's just operating in the dark. That's Paul, Paul Alpert seconded. I, I, I had to move from where I was because my, my internet connection was spotty, and I actually even cut out at one point, so I had to move closer to the, to my router, and, and I'm quite uncomfortable. I'm sitting on stairs.
In the laundry.
All right, so I guess we're, it's John Trump, wait a minute. I just, we just took a vote on this, right?
Good.
The Board of Appeals, no comment. All right, lost track of where we were. All right, so.
We didn't actually take the vote.
Oh, this, what I, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we had a motion and a second.
Getting back on track.
Hi.
Hi, Ms. Owens, Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Alpert.
Hi.
And I am also an aye on making no comment of the appeals. Now, we have on our agenda committee appointments. And particularly for the Design Review Board. Let me look at materials here. I have some notes too.
Your terms, Jane?
Is it one appointment? No, here we are, I've got it.
Two year term.
Two year term?
Three years, three.
Three, okay.
Okay. And
I'm out.
Deborah Robinson expires June 30, 2020, as does Nelson Hammer, June 30, 2020. And both of, of course, I understand, I haven't spoken with Mr. Hammer, but I understand from Lee that he indicated he would like to continue on the Design Review Board. And are we the appointing authority for Mr. Hammer, Lee?
Yes, we are, for both of them.
Yes, and for Ms. Robinson, Deborah Robinson. There has been a concern about Deborah Robinson's attendance at Design Review Board meetings. According to the, to the Chair. Excuse me, I just want to get my notes. I'm getting a little tired and losing track of this. Because I had a telephone conversation with Deborah Robinson, and the, to talk with her about the concern expressed by the Chair of the Design Review Board, Mark Lusing, yes, excuse me for taking a minute to remember his name, and of course, I know him well, too. And there's a pattern for Ms. Robinson to see when our staff make sure this forum for the meeting and emails go out about who's, who's already, who said they're coming to the meeting. If Ms. Robinson sees that there is a forum, like many young women, she's the only woman on the Design Review Board. She has a school-aged child, she's a professional architect, and there's always a reason why it's hard to get to a meeting if she sees that there's a forum. She often will say that she is unable to attend. And this, this was brought to attention as a concern recently by, I forget if it was the Chair, Mr. Lusing directly, or Lee Newman. And then it occurred again, just recently. So I called and, and talked with her about this being a difficulty for, particularly for the Chair. Because she's on the board for her special expertise as an architect, and her expertise is valued, and input is valued. I don't want to recommend that we fail to appoint Ms. Robinson. She says she wants to be reappointed. She's the only woman on the board. I think we should respect the fact that she says that she'll pay better attention to attending meetings. But I welcome the response to the, from the other board members.
Do we know how many meetings she's attended over the total tenure and how many she's been absent for?
I really don't have the numbers. Do you have a sense, Lee?
No, I don't.
Or at least in the last, in the last six months?
I don't know without going back and looking at the record.
Till our next meeting if we need more information.
Do we have the authority to appoint her for less than a three-year term? I, for example, a one-year term starting July 1, 2020?
I know the terms are supposed to run three years, I don't know, it's, I don't.
It's not, it's not in the charter, but I imagine it's in some kind of bylaw that's set up.
Bylaw, and it indicates that we have these two, three-year appointments.
Okay. Do we have any others who have expressed interest?
No, but we haven't advertised it.
I mean, Mark, I think, is also an architect as well. You know.
Nelson Hammer is a landscape architect. Okay. So, and I did ask Mark Lusing if it's difficult to get, to recruit architects to serve on the board if we didn't have Ms. Robinson, would they really, you know, would that make, you know, very difficult because you want architects? And he said, no, he didn't think so. So that isn't really a factor. But, you know, I have something in mind I may as well mention. The League of Women Voters, on which I'm on the board, is undertaking a study this year of appointed and elected boards in the Town of Needham with a view toward whether serving on boards, and particularly if the boards are elected and running for office, is presenting a particular difficulty for women serving on these boards. And also in general, often with, with the elected boards, you, you have just one candidate, you don't often have anybody else wanting to serve, so there's no contest. So that is going to be studied, and I just, I guess I hesitate to say to a woman member that we're not going to give her another chance, that's all.
Maybe the League might be able to do an outreach. Maybe we can delay this, and maybe the, the League may be able to identify, you know, another person who doesn't, certainly doesn't have to be, she could be an engineer, she could be in media arts, you know, she could have other skill sets that are aligned but not the same as an architect who may have an understanding of public policy. And that might buy us a little bit of time if we're not required to make a decision now. And yet, we can build a little lead time to try and find some other competent candidates.
Well, Mr. Lusing.
Them expired?
Yes.
But isn't the, but isn't the expiration by the Governor's Order delayed?
Board appointments? I, I, I don't know what the law is on board appointments.
I wasn't sure how broad the Governor's Order was on, for instance, the, you know, the expiry of licenses and, you know, those sorts of things.
But the, but the, I don't know what the bylaw says pertaining to appointments, but it usually expires on such and such a day or till someone else is appointed and takes office, right? Isn't that typically the language?
No, we appointed her and we, with an appointment that ended the end of June, and that's, that's the document we signed. And we did the same thing for Nelson Hammer.
So it's essentially a new appointment because it's over now. Well, we need to make a decision either tonight or put it up till the next meeting. I don't, I don't know that Adam in response to your suggestion, you know, the, the next board meeting of the League will be like something in the second week in September. But I don't know if that really.
Yeah, Lee, wouldn't, wouldn't we have to advertise it?
Yes, normally what we would do is we would advertise it in the paper, people would send in their letters of interest and their resumes. We would interview, and we would make a selection if we were starting from scratch.
And she can reapply.
Well, for what it's worth, I'm going to make a motion that we reappoint both Deborah Robinson and Nelson Hammer for new three-year terms beginning July 1, 2020. Let's see if anybody else wants to do it.
Okay, Mr. Jacobs has made the motion to reappoint both Deborah Robinson and Nelson Hammer. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Alpert has seconded. Any further discussion before I call for a vote?
I'm, I'm just curious procedurally because I'm, I'm just curious procedurally, because I'm fairly new to, to these inner workings. When you say, Marty, to see if anyone else comes out of the woodwork, is, if you, if we pass the motion tonight, does that eliminate an opportunity for, for another candidate to apply? I would think so.
But I, I'm, I'll, I think we need to keep an eye on this by communicating with Mark Lusing on a regular basis, see whether she's continuing to miss meetings, and if she is, and we get concerned about it, we may ask her to resign, if it's, if it's, if it's a problem.
Yes. So do we have a second? I, I think Mr. Albert did second.
Yes.
So is there any further discussion of questions? All right, then, it's time for a vote, Mr. Owens.
Hi.
It's I. I, I couldn't hear you very well, Ted, say it again.
Hi.
Thank you. Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Albert.
Hi.
The Chair is also I, so it's unanimous vote to reappoint both Deborah Robinson and Nelson Hammer to the Design Review Board, with a view toward asking our Planning Director to, to, to keep an eye or contact Mr. Lusing, and ask him to, you know, report from time to time on attendance. Is that what you heard, Lee?
Yes, that's what I heard.
Okay, so we'll take care of that. I marked up the two draft minutes and sent markups in. This time I did it with a red line instead of my pen, and I assume they received them will be before I said our next meeting. Is there any correspondence, Lee, that we want to mention?
Uh, no, I don't have anything.
And any other reports from either you, Lee, or from the board members?
Okay, well, I can go first. The, I had gotten a traffic proposal from GPI for Highway Commercial 1. It's now been reviewed by the working group, and I just got the okay from, from Kate, go forward and let the contract on that piece of consulting work, so I'm in the process of doing that. I participated in a meeting today with the Needham Affordable Housing Trust. I've been working over the course of the last week and a half, looking at setting up a program that would provide rental assistance to people of lowering 80% of area median income for a three-month period, who have lost their jobs and are, are facing economic distress as a function of COVID. A number, a number of other communities have engaged in this kinds of program, Newton has one now, Watertown does, Belmont does, and the town received a grant, or there's a nonprofit, Metro West, which received a $50,000 grant, and so I think the Selectmen are looking at, through, through the trust, going forward with the proposal, the town meeting, which would allocate $150,000 for that kind of a program. And so I've been working with the Assistant Town Manager and our Housing Specialist on putting together that CPC grant application. Also, just on the small grant repair program, I don't know if you remember, the town appropriated $50,000 for that repair program, and we just ran our second round of funding, and we, we received, I think, eight, nine applications, which are going to utilize the remainder of the fund through the, during Phase 1, we received, I think, four applications. So that program was successful, and I think the Selectmen are now looking at continuing it through an appropriation in the spring at the same level of $50,000. So those are the projects that I've been involved in as of late, in conjunction with the subdivision approvals we've been looking at, and Children's Hospital is coming in at the end of the month for a presentation to the full development review team for the town, which includes all the folks that will be doing the plan reviews on the, on the project, and that's set up, I think, for the fourth Tuesday of the month, and I anticipate I'll have a schedule to report to you on, in terms of what their schedule looks like going forward in terms of special permits that will be required.
I just thought of one more thing, Lee. Do you want to mention that the town has hired an Economic Development Director? I don't have her name in my head. You?
I'm sorry, I, I thought I did that at the last meeting, maybe I, maybe I did it, maybe I did it for some, oh, I did it for the CEA, I'm sorry. Do you want, Alan, I mean, Adam, since you're the CEA Director, do you want to chime in here?
So I, so the town hired and came to terms with, obviously, with a woman named Amy, I mispronouncing her last name, Heisler, I think, who's the Executive Director of the Dedham.
Square.
Oh, square, or Dedham Square Circle. I have to say, I, I participated in the interview process, and I did find her to be a very dynamic leader. I think that she does a lot with very little, and she has accomplished a lot in mixed-use development, and I think she, she's also a town meeting member in Dedham, so I think she's sensitive to, I think she's sensitive to, you know, what town meeting may, you know, may approve on the one hand, and what we're trying to do with the CEA to promote economic development. There seems to be some focus now with an attention on small business, but I'm trying to find a balance between preserving small business that we have through the immediate crisis, but also keeping a long view of what we're doing with our medium-sized business. You know, TripAdvisor is going through a massive change, I think they gave up and are subleasing about 100,000 square feet of space, something like that, Lee.
Top floor, at least.
And so, you know, so I, I certainly don't want to take our eye off medium-sized business in town, and yet, there's, we're obviously in a crisis situation for a period of time with small business, so. She seemed very smart, very capable, and very creative with, you know, program ideas. I think that she would do very well reaching out to, you know, businesses in town that would find her to be a very strong advocate, and I think that she's sensitive on the political issues and, you know, what, you know, the CEA will try to accomplish with, you know, with the Select Board.
I, I learned about this appointment by email today or yesterday from Greg Redman, the, the Director of the Newton Needham Chamber of Commerce, who was full of praise for our new Economic Development Director, who he has worked with in her capacity as the Executive Director of the Dedham Circle, Dedham Square Circle. So I think, it sounds like we have, we have a good person we're going to be working with in the future. Okay, any other business, is there no other business?
Motion to adjourn.
I can.
All right. Albert, motion to adjourn, and Mr. Jacobs, I think, seconded that, or?
Yeah.
We have, so, vote on motion to adjourn, Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Albert.
Hi.
And I, and so we stand adjourned.
Thanks.
Good night.
Get out of the basement, Bob.
Yeah, I will.
All right, good night, everybody.
Good night.